Open meetings as a preliminary matter. This is Justine St. John, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am here. Staff? Greg?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
And so Greg, do I just go through all of the staff or?
No, because they'll introduce themselves when it comes to their topic.
Okay, all right, so we'll stop with that. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Zoom, video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and then to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except for any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs. And we recommend that members and the public follow along the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless the Chair notes otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through the Chair taking care to identify yourself. And for items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call each one by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So Greg, this is. Do I need to second to open the meeting?
No.
Okay. Making sure.
No, it's a good question. I go, you're good, you're good.
Sorry about that. All right, so moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? Hearing, unseeing them. I'll move on. Next is going to be item two is the acceptance of minutes. I move, so there are three sets of minutes, June 16th, June 25th, and July 7th. So I'm going to move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of June 16th, 2020, as shown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion on the June 16th? No? All right, so a roll call vote. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand? Oh, Armand, you're muted. Still muted.
Of course, I'm muted.
All right, and I am a yes. All right, sounds good, five to zero. The most, the move to accept and approve the meeting minutes for June 25th, 2020, as shown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Armand. And any discussion points regarding the June 25th meeting? Okay. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And we're going to move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of July 7th, 2020, as shown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on those minutes at all? All right. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you. So moving on to correspondences, we've got A through correspondence. We've got A through F. A move to accept and approve correspondences A through F as shown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments regarding any of the correspondences A through F?
Just for the public purposes, Greg, can you summarize the issue relative to the 129 Parker Street Development issue and the money's owed? I can say that I attended virtually, obviously, Facebook Live, the, the planning board meeting relative to that particular issue. And Special Counsel John Witten was quite clear in his, his conclusion that we are owed over $200,000 by the developer at 129 Parker Street and that they are refusing, based on some allegations that they make, to pay us that $200,000. And I know that as a result of that discussion, the planning board has opened up a public hearing where there will be discussion at the public hearing and potentially a vote to basically pull permitting for them going forward, virtually stopping the process of their project. So I wondered if you can just bring more so the public up to date as to where things are at, what, if anything, they've responded as a result of that. And I know there's also a hearing, I think, coming up next week where they're looking for some type of a change in their, in their plan that includes relatively minor issues. But I think some members of the planning board are, are going to be a little bit concerned about them asking for anything when we're owed. And I see Santa Claus just came on with, with, would probably be able to add more to, if he's heard anything. But if you can give us a summary, Greg, I'm sorry for being long-winded on it, but I just wanted to make sure that the, you know, the platform was set.
Very good. So I, I think you nailed the 20,000-foot overview of, of the situation. But just to give a little more context, and then I would defer to Megan Zamuto or Bill Nemzner, the Town Planner. To, as you said, we are. Not requesting, we, we are asking that the Capital Group abide by the special permit agreement and specifically the terms of the downstream sewer improvement project that included certain amount of contributions from the Capital Group for those means, for those, for that project. And there's a sum remaining, and it's above $200,000. The Capital Group feels that, at this time, that there's not sufficient evidence to support our claims of their, of their deficiencies in that, in that sum. So, to, as you said, the planning board heard from the Capital Group that they're, that they're unsatisfied. And the planning board would like to, that they are allowing for some more discussion to occur between the town staff and the Capital Group representatives to see if, if some clarity can come up. However, you know, the town staff, I'm very proud of Megan Zamuto, Bill Nemzner, Wayne Amico, the Town Engineer, and others who have, I think, provided more than enough sufficient evidence to show that we are more than justified in our request for them to pay that sum. I don't recall off the top of my head when that, that follow-up date is for the planning board. So Megan and Bill, when is the next planning board meeting?
So this is Megan Zamuto, Assistant Town Administrator. I think David, you did a great job summarizing the issue, and Greg filled in. The, the hearing has been set for September to consider the issue. We are reaching out to Capital Group to try to get a better understanding of what information they need from us to pay this outstanding sum. We had our consultants from StanTech, who have been with the project since its inception, you know, create an analysis that outlines specifically what Capital Group owes and what the town owes. And we have had some conversations in the last six months when we first sent them the invoice in January, kind of poring over the different amounts and coming in terms with, you know, who owes what. So at this point, we're trying to request what other information Capital Group is looking for. I emailed them last week and I haven't heard back. And I just want to be clear that we're not negotiating this amount. This is what we're owed. What, what I'm trying to do is get an understanding of what information they're missing so that they can understand it and kind of go back to our consultants and try to provide it. So, and as for, you know, upcoming meetings, David, you mentioned, you know, the, the Capital Group is going to be coming in front of the planning board. And they are, you know, I, I was there as well. And, you know, some planning board members were concerned about this outstanding sum. The, the guidance that staff got from the planning board was to continue business as usual from an administrative standpoint, which we're doing. But I do think it could be in the back of their minds as they're approached for additional adjustments as the, as the project moves forward. And there'll be some now, there'll be some after, you know, as the project continues, there'll be additional adjustments and requests, which is very normal for a project of this scale. But, you know, with this outstanding payment, it's, it's, you know, it's difficult to enter into these kind of partnerships in good faith until it's really resolved. So, you know, I can assure the board and the town that we're doing everything we can to work with them and try to understand what, what missing pieces of data they need to see. And I will not be providing that. I will be going to our consultants, who are experts in providing it. So, you know, we hope to have a positive solution. I, I feel confident we can resolve this this summer. I mean, this, pulling a permit is, is not something that I don't think anyone really wants to do. And by resolving, I mean, I expect them to pay in full this summer.
However, and it is, it's a drastic move. But John Witten said that that was basically their option to, to do that as a possibility. The other question that I wanted to clarify so that it's known and made clear, is this, this sum of money over and above the sums of money that we asked that they declined to pay and negotiated upon relative to some police details, et cetera, back, you know, three, four, five months ago? Where there's a pattern here that seems that when money is owed, or we believe money is owed, that they are hesitant to pay the town of Maynard what the town of Maynard is owed. And John Witten reminded them at that meeting that, you know, 1,000 residents sat at town meeting with good faith and overwhelmingly voted for this project with the expectation that they would live up to their end of the bargain. And it's quite disappointing from my perspective to see that every time an issue comes up, they give Maynard grief. And I don't think Maynard is the Maynard that they might think we are. We're, we're not going to take their grief, and we're going to make sure we get what we are entitled to. We've given them enough breaks along the way on this project that I think enough is enough.
Yeah, I think, David, you know, on the police detail issue, there was, there was an issue of an outstanding payment and a disagreement about who was responsible for that payment several months ago. And that, that issue, what has been resolved? Capital Group did pay in full. There was no negotiating of the price. It was, you know, the cost of the police details. And we were kind of successful resolving that. So I, I'm hopeful that this one has the same outcome. And, you know, I really, I think, I think we can get there.
It's just unfortunate that every time something comes up, it seems so far, we've, they've given us pushback, and that's very unfortunate.
What, so Greg, Megan, maybe, will you answer the question? What is the, what is the town's recourse, other than, you know, standing there and demanding poll permit? You know, can, you know, can you withhold occupancy permits? What, 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 what does the town have in its toolbox to, you know, work, to help, you know, impress upon these guys that they owe us a certain sum of money for whether, no matter what it's for? Because there's going to be others that are going to come up between now and, you know, the, the final inning, to David's point. When, when, you know, what, what are our other, what other tools do we have at our disposal to use to, um, kind of, I don't know, impress upon them that we're serious? And, and to, you know, more or less force them to make the payments that are due?
Again, this is Megan Zamuto. You know, the, we've been having a lot of discussions with Special Town Counsel John Witten about this. And, you know, there are, I think there are a few options. One was to withhold occupancy and building permits and things like that. Since the planning board is enforcing the special permit, you know, they, they discussed this issue at their meeting. And the path that they decided to take was to, you know, schedule this public hearing to consider the revocation of the special permit. But their direction for the summer was to continue issuing permits for the next couple of months. But that could, I mean, that could definitely be used, you know, down the line if we need to.
Is there, is there a, is there a significance to the timeline of the summer? You know, why you would take the summer off from getting it done? Or is there a significance to that timeline for, for anybody?
Yeah, ask Bill, you know, Bill, what your thoughts are on that. I mean, the, the, the planning board decided to set that as a date. I don't know if you have any more insight into their thought process, Bill?
No, I think that they felt that this was unnecessary and that the developer would recognize that and, and set the date far enough out where there would be time for this to happen, rather than if they'd set it in the next two weeks, for example. And we posted it and all that, you know. They felt that was a reasonable time to rectify this. And, I mean, I agree with Megan, that this was, it just doesn't make any sense. It's crazy.
Because it's. I was on Facebook watching, and I kind of noticed that Mr. Cadenzaro was still your attorney. So I don't hold, I don't hold much, hold out much hope for any sanity.
It just doesn't make sense. And, and there's, they're kind of stuck. You know, I don't know how they can, they can stall a little bit, make it miserable. It's no fun, I can guarantee you. But, um, in the end, I don't know how it can, I don't think there's an argument.
What we have at our disposal, that's all, no worries.
Yeah, yeah, well, the perm, I mean, we certainly, the planning board has, you know, everything, really, with the, with the permits. The occup, they could, the building inspector could withhold occupancy permits because the applicant wouldn't be consistent with the planning board decision. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of tools. They have paid, they did pay all the mitigation funds for the, that were called for in the development agreement. Though we got the final one this week, I think, that covered the whole million on that. So that we were, we did get.
Anybody else have anything on that?
Yeah, I had a question on C of the youth and amateur sports, which seems to be more applicable to the, the high school, actually, all the schools. But, you know, are they copied on that as well? Because that's, that's the one that, you know, the state regulation saying what can and cannot happen for football, basketball, baseball, et cetera.
I'm not sure if I sent it directly to Superintendent's office, but I will.
I, I think I got something from the athletic director, the new athletic director, for my personal email. And it did seem that he was referencing this. So I believe they have seen it, but we can double check.
Yep.
Certainly, local recreational, like Little League-type things. It's not Little League, but whatever it is has seen it because they're out there playing. There, there's a big group of people out on Sunday in the, in the god-awful heat, but loving the game, so baseball, that is.
Baseball is relatively low risk, so.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the parents sitting around in huge groups under a small, little tree because that's the only, the only area of shade.
Only shade there is. Anybody else? I wanted to acknowledge and thank Chris Butler. He's resigning from his position for Conservation Commission. I don't feel like we had him nearly long enough. But I wish him well and, and wish him luck. All right, so the motion to accept the correspondences as written, A through F.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, hold on. Sorry about that. Um, all right, next we're moving on to appointments. And the motion is to appoint Paul La Sage as an alternate member to the Historical Commission with a term from, it's actually a term from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, an authorized digital signature if it is approved. Do I have a second? I think that was.
Second.
Okay, Chris, thank you. Anybody have any discussion, Greg?
Let me see if I, if Paul, are you, Mr. La Sage, are you on?
He's here. He's here.
Oh, good. Can you just give yourself a quick introduction and why you want to be, you know, on the Historical Commission?
Alan Dunn has asked me.
There you go.
I served at the planning board for like 100 years. I was a selectman for a term, and I'm a fifth-generation Maynard person. And I think she's, that I might add to it.
Excellent.
I said, sure.
Fantastic. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. La Sage? No? Have you, have you attended any of the meetings yet, or?
Nope.
Talk to Alan.
Talk to Alan. Lives down the street from me, son, you walk in the door.
Excellent. No, she is, she is fantastic. All right, then, so move to the motion to appoint. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, congratulations, Paul. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah. Join me.
Contact Town Hall, Paul, noted to get Swan in.
Okay, we'll go.
Clerk's office, yep.
Excellent. And then the second is to, is the motion to approve the updated school building committee membership list as presented and authorizing the digital signature if approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Armand. I think the change I saw here is that I'm now listed under, for the local chief executive officer. And then Chris is another, another member of the board further down.
Well, that's right. So if you will, Madam Chairman, so it's, so per, per the MSBA procedures, we have to update this within 20 days of any change to the membership list. And with the, with the selection of the new officers on this board, that's one reflection. But I kept, I kept Mr. Silva on there because he's still delays on, per the board delays on list. I also provided Mr. Hawes, Brian Hawes, as the new superintendent because we had, I had just done this when the interim superintendent was still in place. I, and I believe that's, I believe that's the, the only changes. But I forwarded this to, oh, and maybe Mr. White, Wayne White? But I can't recall because he's new, he's the new business manager for Maynard Public Schools. But I sent this over to the superintendent's office, and he and I are making sure that it's, we're on the same, we have the same list, submitting it to the MSBA. So if, if the board approves this, we'll submit this to the MSBA, as we'll do whenever there's any changes to this, to this list.
The one thing that I noticed is Brian Haas's email is wrong. I just noticed it now, it's K1 instead of K12.
Oh, thank you. All right, well, I'll fix that. So maybe approve it as revised.
Must be serial.
Good job. That was, good catch, good catch.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Just a quick procedural question based on past history. Are these members as listed, all voting members as we speak of a current school commit, a school building committee, or no?
No, so if you look on the far-right column.
Okay, okay, never mind. That answers the question.
No, but it's a good question. It's like, it's because not, I.
I missed, I missed that point. Okay, no, no problem. Very good.
Perfect. Anybody else? All right. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. On to item number five, application for used car dealer license. Motion to approve the application for license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble second-hand motor vehicles or parts thereof as applied by Jeffrey Reynolds at 18 Brook Street, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Greg?
Let me see if Mr. Reynolds is on the line.
It looks like he is, he's muted.
Can, Mr. Reynolds, can you introduce yourself and give the board your, your vision, your intentions for this application?
Still can't hear you, Mr. Reynolds.
Bummer, okay, let me, so, so per the, per the application, Mr. Reynolds is applying for license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble second-hand motor vehicles thereof. Becky, can you clarify, or can you check, is this Mr. Reynolds' first time applying?
Yes, you're muted, not you, Becky.
I got an affirmative, I can.
Yes. It is his first time applying with the town of Maynard.
Very good. It looks, per his application, that he wants to do online sales only, no onsite storage or display.
So.
I don't have any further information on the application, I apologize. But I was, yeah, if, if you would like to wait until Mr. Reynolds is able to come, we can, we can postpone, we can table this motion if you would like, until Ms. Reynolds is able to speak to the board.
Well, I, I just, the one question I have, and then I, I saw someone unmute, so he might be here.
That was me that I'm muted.
Oh, well, I saw you too, but, oh, okay. All right. Is, so, so there's not going to be any vehicles or parts or, there's not going to be anything on the property, but we still hold the license because the transaction happens in Maynard? Is that why, how that works?
Correct. So they can go to authorized auctions to purchase vehicles for people. He would have the dealer's plate to be able to transfer it to a new owner.
Okay.
So is he basically working out of his house? Is that what the?
Yeah, we have a, we have a couple others in that situation. They don't actually have any vehicles onsite. And, and that's covered by, you know, working out with the building commissioner and whatnot, so.
So, Mr. Reynolds, if you, do you want to try to speak again? Or do you want to try to call in? And that way we can hear from you possibly?
The magic of technology.
Well, it was so, Madam Chairman, it depends if the board has any questions. I know, I know it is standard practice for the board to, to speak, you know, to have a conversation. But it is up to you. You can, you can approve it if you would like, but you can also table it if you would like.
Okay. I'd actually like to hear from the rest of the board. I, I'm, I could do either. So does anybody have any feelings either way?
I would have probably had more of a, you know, concern if it was something that was going to be parking cars on, you know, in this, in this situation, I'm, I don't have a concern.
Obviously, parking cars, we'd have an issue potentially of zoning and everything else that was, that would be of concern, but I don't think that's, that applies here. Is there, I, I have one quick question. Is there any tax implications for the town, any benefit from, uh, a business perspective? To have a business like that where somebody is-
Licensed fee.
So, yeah, it's 25 bucks or whatever it might be.
200.
200. But any type of, do we get any type of benefit for excise tax? Do we get any benefit because there is a, of a, of a vehicle being sold within the town?
The second fee is, um, opening a business, um, you have to have that type of, license through the town clerk for a new business, and that's good for four years, and I think that's a $40 fee.
Yeah, so that, but that's all one-time stuff, but there's nothing, nothing rotational that helps us.
Good question. I, I'll ask, because that is a good question, it's something like, similar to like the concept of value-added tax, like for the transaction itself. I can ask, I think-
But that, that would probably go to the state, though, for, for a, uh, you know, the sales tax per se, but if there's excise tax benefits.
Yeah. I can ask. Yep.
Okay. Chris or Jeff, do you have any?
I'm okay with it. It's all, says all, it's all online and-
Okay. Alright, then we will move forward to approve the license. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So congratulations, Mr. Reynolds. Good luck.
Good luck, Mr. Reynolds.
Alright, moving on to number six, the home rule petition, uh, full liquor license. And this is a motion to direct the Town Administrator's Office to draft an article for the special town meeting for an additional all alcohol retail license for Art's Specialties, soon to be located at 25 Nathan Street, Maynard, through a home rule petition. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Greg?
So it's similar, I'll, I'll do a quick introduction, and then Megan Zamuto's handling this, and then you can also see the applicant is also, or like the, not applicant yet, but, you know, the requestee is on the line, requestor. So, um, if, similar to the approach and procedures that we took for Russell's convenience store, that, it's, it's the same concept. So, so for, for the public's context, you know, the state divvies up how many, how many, um, liquor licenses, in this case, full package store licenses, each municipality is allowed to have. And in order to increase that amount, you have to petition the legislature. So that's why we're saying, a home rule petition. So it's, it's the municipality asking the legislature to increase the amount of, licenses we're allowed to have. And we have to do that through town meetings. So this, this motion to the board this evening is to see, would you like the Town Administrator's Office and, and, and town staff to, to do that work, to, to draft the article for the consideration of the board onto the warrant, which would then be, you know, asked for approval by, at town meeting, just similar that we did for Russell's. And, and, and through the lessons that we learned from doing Russell's, Megan has been in touch with Representative Kate Hogan's office, who will then be in touch with the committee, and I don't recall which committee it is, um, at the State House, that, that is sort of responsible for vetting these applications and whatnot from, from municipalities. So it is very similar. But I, so I, I don't know if Megan wants to add anything, but I would be, I know the board is probably curious to hear from, um, the requestor himself, who's on the line. And I don't want to say his last name. I think he should introduce himself because I'll probably miss it out. But, um, Megan, do you want to add anything?
Just briefly, I'm Megan Zamuto, Assistant Town Administrator. I just want to point out the chart that I put in board docs. So we currently have, um, three all alcohol retail licenses. We will have a fourth that will go to Russell's. It is, it was approved at town meeting, and it is currently with, um, Kate Hogan's office going through the committees, and, and we sent in our paperwork after town meeting, so that we just haven't gotten the final, you know, stamp of approval on that. So then we'll have four. But I just wanted to kind of point out where we are in the landscape of the full alcohol retail licenses.
Is this normal for a town of our size, this distribution? Do you know?
Um, you know, I haven't, I haven't done the research about how, how many others have, um.
Size is relative, so we, we have a downtown whereas some towns don't. So, so like, I, I think it's a valid question. Like, we don't want to, like, have too much of a density. My understanding is the history of Maynard had, used to be pretty popular with, with, uh, alcohol licenses. But, um, but the, but this is not a bar, they, that just, so just for, just kind of for the understanding of it, it's, 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 it's a, it's a package store to a degree. I mean, like, although he wants to do it, my understanding is, and he explained his business model, he wants to do it similar like a grocery store style. So it's not exact, it's not like a Russell's or it's a convenience store, but I think he, he should explain. But I, but that's a valid question, like-
And, and one other, sorry, one other thing to point out, um, because I did speak with the, uh, with Kate Hogan's office to ask, you know, the town did just ask for a home rule petition last year, would there be any issue with, um, you know, doing another request a year later? And the answer was, no, in their perspective, um, that, you know, there's no problem with that. So I just wanted to give that context as well.
Can, can you speak as, as best you can relative to recently, I think it was within the last two years, the, the legislature changed the rules on these where not only now do you need to have an address and everything else, but, uh, even a little bit liberalism relative to lifting of, of quotas that used to exist for a community, whereas Maynard used to have a, uh, we ran out all the time. Becky might be able to answer this better than, than anybody else really, because she deals with it. I'm just wondering, is there, under the new rules, is there still a cap? Or do we have an unlimited ability to go out and say we want home rule petition for another one, and another one, and another one? Is there, is there a cap on there anywhere?
Um, I'll, I'll defer to Becky on this, but I know that, um, we don't, we, we have, the only category that we, we are at our capacity is this category, which is the all alcohol retail. We have available licenses for all alcohol restaurant, wine and malt restaurant, and wine and malt retail. So for this is, this is the one category that we're at, at the, at our capacity, but I don't know, Becky, if you know, if there's, um, a limit on how many licenses a town can request through home rule.
You know, as, a, as developers come in and want to, um, develop different areas of a town, it's easy for, uh, a town to, uh, request, say like six, eight, 10, per the size of a project, uh, similar to what we did at 129 Parker Street. Back when I started with the town about 19 years ago, um, we were at capacity on the liquor licenses. So we used to have a running list. Now I pretty much have available licenses in all the categories but the full package stores. So this is one that has some value currently. So I guess it's a good thing.
Thank you.
And so I, I won't try to, to say your last name either, sir, but if, would you like to, uh, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Arthur Nergarian. I'm a owner of Art's Specialties. Uh, we've been in Maynard about, since 2017 now, and, uh, every time I, uh, I have another store in Belmont as well, Belmont is about five years, and, uh, every, uh, everyone being so, uh, happy with the store, and I'm being happy with the town all the time. So we are in a position now that, uh, I wanted to expand, uh, Maynard's store, and the building came along, so that was a great opportunity for me to take the building and, um, move the 25 Nathan Street, and move the store into that building, and become a, like, specialty food store, uh, in a downtown Maynard, and the other stuff that was kind of, uh, wanted me to do it, I got a little, I always, I, I know the market basket wasn't a huge thing, it, it's a different concept than we are, but I got scared that even though if a lot of people go to the Parker Street and they start to shop, having a liquor store and having a market basket, then the, uh, the store in downtown, one, one survives. So for me to have full, uh, having a full liquor license and having a full food serve, a full, food, like a selling of food and, uh, kind of grocery store, that'll help me to be able to survive in town. So now is the, the only reason I took a huge risk. At, at this moment, I'd basically taken a huge risk buying, uh, 25 Nathan Street and trying to move the store there. And, uh, I'm hoping if this goes through, that will be a huge help for me.
Great, thank you. Um, actually, I did, I did a little bit of research and saw a couple articles about your store in Belmont, and I have to ask, with your expansion to 25 Main Street, uh, Nathan Street, would you be doing the hydroponic, um, vegetables and things like that that you started to do in Belmont?
Actually, I am already in process of bringing it here as well, and it's going to be front of the street, so I already ordered a equipment at this point.
Great, that's fantastic. Uh, does anybody else have any questions?
How is the pandemic affecting your business?
It's, uh, been stable because actually, uh, it, but stable and a little better because more people, uh, feel comfortable to shop in our store because it's, uh, a little, uh, you don't, it's not crowded. So everyone comes in, we do curbside pickups, we do deliveries, you know, uh, we basically accommodate anything the customer wants to because of the size of the store, we, we don't like, it's not too busy. So, but we've been stable.
Good. I'm glad you're in a position you really can expand.
And again, like, it's a huge, huge risk that, uh, it's always a risk you, you think it will be better, but at the moment, I've seen the downtown, like, uh, I, I just want to bring a lot more life to downtown.
We appreciate that.
We do.
Anyone else?
Hey, Art, uh, this is Armand, by the way. I have a question for you. Someone, um, mentioned, or there's a rumor that there's a cannabis store looking to partner with you at that building, and what, what's the story behind that, do you know?
They, they, uh, having a discussion with me, they want to rent a space from me, but again, like, it's up to a town to decide if they want to allow them to do it. But, uh, it, it, they saw the building and, because the building had a, uh, parking and drive-through, they thought it might be a great location, so I'll let them to talk about it.
Okay.
Alright, anyone else? Okay, so, um, so this will just be directing the, uh, Town Administrator's Office to draft the article, which we'll then review and talk about before it's put on the, uh, special town meeting warrant in October. So, everyone in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So good luck, thank you very much.
Much.
Yes, good luck and congratulations on your building.
Thank you so much.
For making an investment in our downtown.
Yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright. On to, uh, item number seven, recreational marijuana retail establishment. Uh, this is a motion to confirm that Masswell Spring, Masswell Spring 4 to 6 Nathan Street, their proposed marijuana establishment is in compliance with the town of Maynard's bylaws and ordinances, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jeff. Alright, uh, Greg or Megan?
Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Alright, I'm Megan Zamuto, Assistant Town Administrator. Um, this is a step in the process, and we did a similar, a similar path with, um, Green Star several months ago. Basically, uh, the document before you in board docs is saying that the Cannabis Control Commission has received a complete application from Masswell Spring. So, um, you know, they've gotten all the components, they have not yet done a thorough review, but they have all the pieces to begin their review. So this is a check to the town to say, um, you know, we got this information, let's just confirm with, with the municipality that this is an allowed use in the zoning of the address proposed. Um, so this, this particular applicant already received a special permit from the Planning Board, they've been through that process, and they are in a zone, are in a zone that's, uh, zoned for retail cannabis use. And our recommendation is that this is approved. The next step in the process would be for the Cannabis Control Commission to do their thorough review of this application. And then they would, um, grant a provisional license. Um, after that, the town, um, the applicant would apply to the Board of Selectmen for, um, a, the Board of Selectmen license. So that's what we did more recently with the previous applicant. Um, we're, we're a little bit steps away from that one. Right now, this document is just confirming with the Cannabis Control Commission that this location is acceptable.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Megan or Greg?
Hi, it's, it's Amy. I actually have a question, um.
Wait, can you, can you introduce yourself?
Amy Price?
Do you have an address? You live in town, Ms. Price?
Yep, 16 Allen Drive in Maynard.
Oh, thank you. Okay, continue on.
Um, so I'm not always able to attend these meetings, and I was just curious how many retail shops are slated to come into the town already. I've heard that it's three, and now possibly four, you know?
At this, at this moment, um, this is Megan Zamuto, we have host community agreements with two retailers. Um, we, we just have the two right now, um, and, you know, there are others, uh, interested parties that are interested in retail, um, manufacturing and other uses, and they have not signed those community agreements to date.
Okay. Um, so what's taken into consideration, because Maynard is such a small town, um, I know somebody just brought up the number of liquor licenses, um, in our town compared to other towns. You know, what is, I guess my question is, what is taken into consideration when somebody applies? When we've already got, you know, a couple in our tiny little town already?
Can I, can I do one point clarification? So as Ms. Zamuto just said, she, she said the host community agreement said there are two. So this, this applicant is one of those two. So, so with, it's not, it's not a third, just to clarify, it's not a, this is not a third applicant, this is, this is only the, the, kind of like the middle phase of the second applicant. Uh, but not a third. And, and to your, to your other point, Megan, clarify further, and I'm sorry, Madam Chairwoman, if I'm speaking over you, but, um, this is, um, the sort of vetting process that we have, uh, is that it goes through the Economic Development Committee first. So when, when a, um, interested establishment, whether they be, uh, well, whatever, but whatever sort of establishment they want to provide, they, we, they introduce themselves to my office through Megan Zamuto. Megan will do like a quick, you know, get to know them, whatever, but then we'll send them to the Economic Development Committee, where they'll have to give their pitch, really. They'll have to kind of give their business model and their pitch to the EDC. Which I believe, I'm confident, I, I, I have a lot of faith in, in the Economic Development Committee, I think they're a very thorough, very experienced, um, body. And, um, and if they kind of pass muster, then we'll consider them to go to the board, uh, where they would have to introduce themselves again. And then if the board is, is willing, then they, the board, this is just the process we've done so far, the board will then authorize, or consider to authorize, the Town Administrator's Office to negotiate with that firm or host community agreement. But as of now, we've only been permitted to negotiate with two other firms, if I recall. Um, and that, that's, I, and so that's still a negotiation process, but we, we have some pretty strong terms. So, um, certainly not an expedited process if that's, if there's any fears of that. I, I have confidence that this is very thorough, very, um, cautious, uh, that we approach this very cautiously. For, Megan, if you want to add anything?
I think, um, just, just one thing to add is, um, the decision to enter into a host community agreement by, by the Board of Selectmen, the board has full discretion to decide to partner with a company or not. Um, there is no specific criteria that they, that they must meet, they do not have to give reasons. Um, I'll say that this board has decided not to work with certain interested parties in the past. Um, it can, it can, you know, be for any number of reasons that the board may feel that they do, or that they do not want to enter into this type of contract. Um, so this is really the, the point in the process where, um, the board has full discretion over, um, you know, which applicants are considered, um, and, and to operate in the town.
Okay, thank you.
And Amy, if I could just also add, real- And Amy, if I could just also add real quick, piggyback on to what Greg and Megan said. The other thing is that we did last year's, last year or the year before, on our town meeting warrant, we brought it to town meeting to try to limit the amount of marijuana licenses that we would issue in town. And what we were going for was what was allowed by law, which is 20% of your retail liquor licenses. So we were looking to limit it to two. That failed at town meeting. So right now, the will of the town has been, has told us that they do feel comfortable with us moving forward with host community agreements. But I appreciate Megan and Greg's words as far as I feel like the members of the Board of Selectmen are, are very articulate with what we expect and where we think it would be appropriate and where we think it would not be appropriate in the zoning.
That makes sense. I guess, you know, some things that I'm thinking of is what other towns, why they would vote for, you know, this to come in versus why some of the neighboring towns would, would not want these establishments in their town. Because our town is so small and very dense. But anyway, I appreciate the thorough and, you know, explanation and all of the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions regarding Maswell Spring?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. The question is to confirm that they have, are in compliance with all of our bylaws and ordinances. Are they?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So, yes, I.
Kind of like the obvious question, but.
No, it's a good question. So, yeah, I guess you should not assume. So I, I, I am recommending this motion because our staff, our staff recommends because they have, in our understanding, they have passed all their, our bylaws and ordinances. That's a good question.
So, so does that include approval by the police department for their security plan and all those other things?
No.
That, that, that whole.
We're not there yet.
So that whole security plan came into question, especially given the outdoor permit we granted to the people behind CV, the old CVS building, where that parking lot that they were planning to be a major part of their security apparatus.
Yeah.
We're being told is not theirs. So I'm just kind of wondering, why, why are we moving forward if those things aren't done?
Well, only because it's, it's just the process. So in the procedure, you will approve the license contingent upon approval of the security plan by the, by the police chief. So, and, but this is not the license application. This is only mostly zoning. So if there, and absolutely clarify, Megan, if I'm off, but this is mostly zoning. So if, if, but if we had further bylaws or ordinances, then, you know, that would clarify. You need to have your, your security plan in place by this point, whatever it is. But, but as of right now, per our, per our rules, this is, this is, this is in accordance with our rules. So Megan would like to clarify, and, and just to clarify, has this, I, have they been to the planning board already? I believe they had. That's right.
Decisions in here.
That's right.
Yep. And so I think that makes, it's a really good point. And as we did with, with a previous applicant, you know, they will not get a license from, from this board unless all of the criteria is met. And it's, it's a pretty thorough application and it does involve the sign off from our, our police chief on the security plan. So if that has to be altered or worked on at any point, you know, we wouldn't bring it in, in complete application to this board for review unless it checked all of our, you know, requirements. And that will be done at a later date after the Cannabis Control Commission reviews it. So it's kind of splitting off the, the tasks because, you know, why are we going to go into real detail if for some reason there, it's flagged at the Cannabis Control Commission level and they don't get their provisional license? So we're waiting for them to do their check and then we'll do our further check. So that's kind of our plan right now.
So has, has anything changed regarding their parking issues? Given the discussion that we had with the other business that Chris mentioned earlier. Now, I know they probably couldn't have included private property on their parking, but they did include private property on their accessibility to the rear of their building. So I, and this isn't saying I'm in favor or opposed or whatever. I know that the big argument that's been held by a lot of people throughout this particular applicant's process is availability of parking and the congestion that that location may cause down near the triangle on Nathan Street. And so are we in any way, by, by approving this, which it sounds to me, we really don't have much of a base to, to deny it at this point, based on the fact that we're being told that everything is up to speed with the documents that we have. But having said that, is there going to be another go around with parking issues, traffic issues, traffic flow issues? And et cetera, or is that now behind us?
You know, I can ask Bill, because that, that was all addressed in the special permit through the planning board.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a, this permit, they have to come back in front of the planning board in two years. And so if there's any, the whole idea is if there's any hiccups like that, they can be taken care of. So far as the traffic, the planning board's decision requires the hiring of an officer to direct the traffic and, and keep things moving along the triangle. That was a concern that was brought up quite a bit. Um, also the planning board's special permit is contingent upon the police chief's approval of the security plan also. So there's, it's, it's pretty tight, I think. And they also have a condition where if there's any sort of problems at any time, the planning board can call them back before them about the permit. So they, they were very, the planning board did a pretty thorough job, I think, on, on making sure that if, because we didn't know what to expect, you know, and, and I think it's a pretty, it's pretty complete.
And I noticed in the conditions, there's also operational hours that are noted. Are they consistent with the other similar businesses that's already been approved? If not, is that a concern? Should they be, should there be a, you know, a, a consistent operational times? Or are they free to do it, free to do whatever hours they want, as long as they're within our general bylaws, which we've sort of conditioned upon what we have for liquor license rules as we've discussed this through?
I can, I can speak to that, David. The hours do match the, the other application.
Okay.
And I, and I was just wondering, is Olaf Engari, is he, are you on that line today? And there's a couple of phone numbers that I don't know, so I don't know if he was calling in.
So have we been in contact with these guys recently?
Yes.
Been for quite some time.
I was surprised to see Mr., well, how do you say his last name? Ongar, well, Olaf. I was surprised to see him the other day, but they, he knew exactly when the Cannabis Control Commission sent us though, that this sort of like, this request for, for this board to approve this. And I caught him, he caught me in the parking lot. They're very excited. But I asked him the exact same question. I said, like, I haven't, I haven't seen you for a while, but I assume he's still paying lease on that, on the storefront in Nathan. He said, yes. They're excited to move on, to move forward with this process.
And all of their issues in Acton have been taken care of, where there's no concerns with any, and I don't even know what those issues were, but I know that they had a hiccup with some, some type of problem.
It was, it was operational and, and you're, and you're right. And that's, that's definitely at the forefront, I believe, of this body and my own. Like, I have the same concerns. So no, I don't know if everything has been, you know, because that's, that's between the CCC Acton and, and this firm. But my understanding is it has been settled because I, I believe that they are operating again, as they have been. Because I asked that to Olaf, how business is going. He said it was well. So Megan, if you want, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, and, and this, this review by the Cannabis Control Commission will, you know, be the state's stamp of approval that everything is okay for their, for their business. And, you know, their LLC includes Acton. So if they come back with a provisional license, then we can feel confident that they've done their due diligence and we can do ours on our end, which is the Board of Selectmen license application.
And the one in Acton is medicinal, right? Not retail? So then this is a retail side, because, you know, my comment was going to be, I drive by that fairly regularly and there's rarely more than three cars in their parking lot. But retail's a little different than the medicinal side. So, you know, you never know.
These are, these are good questions and, and I, yeah, certainly. If, if this gets to the point where it's an application in front of the board for the actual license. Yeah, I think, I think they're, you know, both Stephanie Lipton and Olaf, I think, I think you're definitely right to ask them a lot of questions.
Is there a way, I, I realize that this was something that was, it was an error and, and whatnot. But there's a, on one of the pages, it says that the registration city is in Acton. And they acknowledged that they couldn't change that in the database. So it's a problem with the CCC's database. Is there a way to kind of like crop, like make a note somewhere to just confirm that it's actually in Maynard? I mean, I'm sure it's because their, their, their medicinal is in Acton, but.
Sure, this is Megan Zmuto here. I did talk to Kate Federoff about this, Attorney Federoff, yesterday. And she stated that the, the doing business as has no legal significance and it will have no impact on the community. And in fact, that the doing business as application and filing is really if your company name doesn't match the name that you want to put on your store. And actually Maswell Spring is, is the same, you know. So I don't even think they have a doing business as. It was, it was a clerical error. But I can certainly follow back up with the Cannabis Control Commission to see what we can do. Because, you know, they did make an error on a previous one that, that I had corrected. You know, this one just seems, the other one was hours of operation and that felt like it didn't match our planning board decision. So it felt really critical. This one, since I did ask town council and, and she said there was really no problem with it, I didn't address it further. But I'm happy to do so if you'd like.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Questions, concerns? No? All right. Then we're going to move to confirm that it's in compliance with the Town of Maynard's bylaws and ordinances. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Excellent. Uh, next is going to be item eight, which is the Maynard Police Department moved to approve the immigration policy for the Maynard Police Department as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Greg, do you want to start? And then I'm sure we'll get input from the chief.
So just as a little context, and then, yeah, certainly chief can explain further. But, you know, how we got to this point is that there was a citizen's petition submitted to us to a town meeting. The petition was just, I'm going to like broad stroke summarize it. It was in relation to an immigration policy somewhat for the police department, or at least dealing with immigration status of, of certain, you know, in their interactions with the public and whatnot. But it was found to be unenforceable, the citizen's petition, that's not the proper term. But it, but it basically, it's really up to the Board of Selectmen to, to determine the policies of the, of the Maynard Police Department. However, the Board of Selectmen, in response to this citizen's petition, did appoint a human relations committee that one of their primary tasks is to collaborate with the Maynard Police Department and, and the community at large to develop a proposal for the consideration of this board for, you know, to address the immigration policies of the Maynard Police Department. That being said, the Maynard Police Department did have, have policies that were related to immigration status of, of, you know, like of a member of the public that they interact with. But it wasn't quite as direct as this policy gets to specifically for immigration. Gilb is on the human relations committee and, and he worked with that committee. And this is my understanding as a result of that work.
Great. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, chief. Good evening. You sent out an email to Greg and I think it might, I admit, it may have been transmitted to the entire board before tonight's, tonight's meeting. But I'm wondering if you can just, or again, for public sake, for, for the public sake, explain where, if at all, what is being proposed to be changed tonight differs in any way from what was already longstanding policy by the Maynard Police Department?
Yeah, sure. But first, it, it, just to go back a little more of the, this, this was presented prior to town meeting to the selectmen and police department. And we had a meeting, a selectmen's meeting about a year, probably a year, year, year and a few months back. And at the time, there was only a few contentions. You know, we said a lot of the things were in our policies. They were throughout our policies, not a specific policy on immigration or that. But we had policies on the protections of, that we do not ask, you know, person-specific national origin or no decisions are based on that, that any. But we, we, we agreed that we could work on a policy to that. I think there was a little miscommunication at that selectmen's meeting and they went forward to town. But that being said, at the Human Relations Committee meeting, this actually was one of our shorter meetings. It was actually very easy to, to agree to it because a lot of it was already in our policies. We basically reiterated it in this policy. The, the changes were section C and D where, you know, we're not going to cooperate with ICE in things unless I give authorization. The, the original draft document said we wouldn't cooperate with ICE ever. And that was one of the major contentions that we had. That doesn't make the town safer. And we, we had to, we couldn't have a bright line rule, never, never to cooperate with. Because there are situations where we have which, which went to the safety of the town. So we said, you know, under certain situations, there's going to be times where we cooperate with them and that we have to, to make the town safe. And they agreed, you know, so, I mean, it was kind of actually very easy when everybody sat down and worked together to, to get that agreement. And about the only, deputizing of local officials, it's something that we never would have done. It wasn't in our policies, but we had no problem putting it in there because it's something we had never considered. We would never consider it and that. So it wasn't an issue. And then just the reporting part is the only other change.
Yeah, I remember you saying that too, chief, at the, I remember you saying that specifically as well at the meeting that we had prior to the town meeting when. Yeah, it might have been Chief Tabor, but no, I think Mike.
No, Mike did the actual.
I think Mike did the presentation. But anyway, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, so, you know, it's something that we both can agree on that it, it doesn't change really what we've done in the past. Just a little more, if you want to call it, it, it's direct, so we can be pointed to by the, the Human Relations Committee, that people of that status that they can look and see that, okay, the Maynard Police aren't going to ask you for that ever and they're not going to do this. There's certain things we're going to do. So it's not like they have to look through all our policies or they have to look through that. So other than that, you know, I think this will, this helps. I think this kind of helps with the, there was contention at the town meeting where, I don't think there had to be. I, I think we kind of just, it, it was a minor difference, but it didn't come out like that at the town. So I think this will help ease that, some of that strain. And, you know, it, it again, it's not really changing what we've done because we've always been welcome.
If you have any other questions.
Thank you, chief.
Does anyone else have any questions for the chief regarding this?
No, but I just want to comment, I do like having it, even if it was policy before, having it explicitly stated is, is for a lot of people. So I think there is value for some of these in that alone.
I agree.
I appreciate your work on that.
I'm actually very proud of the fact that we, you know, that there was so little in the policies to change that we were already doing the right thing and all it took was really kind of coming together, having a conversation and, and just putting it all into one little, one actual policy. So I'm, I'm proud of the department. I'm proud of, and I know, chief, you had a lot to do with putting a lot of those policies into place. So I'm really appreciative to what you've already done so far. And, you know, it makes it much easier to. And, uh, you know, it, it makes it much easier to, um, you know, to speak to the police department and, uh, and what, what their policies are.
Yeah. Thank you. And as I said before, this, it does go, uh, forward with what we have in our policy. But yeah, I agree with, uh, Jeff and Justin with, it goes completely to like, we can point right to it. You know, and it's easy to identify, uh, if there are any immigrants that are concerned or, um, others can point to it for us because it'll be put on, um, page and, uh, on a HRC's page.
Perfect. Does anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? No? All right.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief. So, uh, approving the immigration policy for Maynard Police, um, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to item number nine, uh, which is Public Works. Uh, we've got a few things. So we'll start with the Tree Resource Management Plan, uh, motion to accept the town of Maynard's Tree Resource Management Plan as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. Greg, do you want to start us off? I know Justin's on the call as well.
Uh, just to, yeah, absolutely. It is, it's mostly Justin DeMarco, DPW Director and Caitlin Young, the Conservation Agent and Assistant Town Planner. This is their, this is their project, uh, but they did it through a grant. Um, we're very fortunate to be the recipient of a grant, uh, that helped us do this tree survey, develop this plan to address shade trees and other, in our, in our sort of like conservation efforts regarding trees in town, which I think is, is particularly important as we blossom train, you know, some of the trees in downtown. Uh, we're working with developers such as the marijuana establishment on Main Street to, to put some more trees in. And I, and I think this will help us in those conversations with developers and with, um, you know, mitigation efforts and whatnot, you know, so we have like a, a plan going forward. Cause Justin, do you want to, do you want to explain further?
Good evening, Justin DeMarco, DPW Director. Yeah, just kind of elaborate a little more. This is, uh, this is actually a project I inherited. Caitlin Young did a majority, the initial work on this, um, and Aaron McClosco at the beginning. And then, um, when I came on, kind of inherited it and moved it forward from, uh, what kind of became a stalled situation. We were the recipients of the biggest DCR grant that they actually give out for this, which is typically about 20 to $25,000. Um, the general purpose and goal of this for the future is as you all know, that Maynard is a little city. And with that being said, urban forestry is vital in a city atmosphere such as Maynard's. It is important for us to, um, have a, a strong management plan to go back on. It also allows our residents to become more educated in the importance of urban forestry and its role within a number of aspects, um, of everyday life. So we're hoping that, uh, we can use this as a guide and a tool and a resource to help educate all residents, um, including the board members and appropriations in the future and mitigation processes with developers, et cetera, to try to bring our urban forestry back to, um, accessible peak levels of, um, resident enjoyment.
Excellent. It was a very lengthy plan, just FYI.
They really usually are. I actually used to do these plans quite often in my undergrad programs, so.
Uh, does anybody have any questions for Justin?
Quickly, if I may, Justin, thank you for the presentation and, um, the documents. That group that, um, that's out there now with the Maynard Tree, I forget the actual, um, the name of them, are they at all involved in this process? That's my first question. Let me get through the list of questions that I got. Secondly, I'm, I'm happy that we're going to make sure that we, uh, we don't continue to deforest or whatever you want to call it, um, our town with, uh, with development and that we'll be able to manage it some way with a formalized plan. And, uh, thirdly, is there any restrictions in this? I didn't notice any, but just to be, uh, so that the people listening and the public know, any issues with a resident that wishes to cut down any trees? Are there requirements for them to notify the town? If there's a series of trees going down, or is it just strictly on public, big swaths of public land?
So we'll start off, those are excellent questions, David. Um, so you're referring to the Maynard Tree Corps.
Right.
Which is.
I apologize to them.
Yeah, no, that's okay, but they, they are awaiting this documentation, but I wanted to make sure that it went to the BOS prior to release for, um, public review. But trust me when I say the Maynard Tree Corps is, um, awaiting this documentation and we meet quite often. Before COVID-19 kind of changed the world, we were actually forming a Maynard, official Maynard Tree Committee. I believe you might remember it, you know, uh, right before, literally right before the world stopped. But so realistically, we haven't, the tree committee has not actually met because of a number of other issues moving forward. But we are, we actually have plans to revitalize, um, and move forward with our first official meeting. Um, and then use this management guide to help, um, that committee, the, the volunteer tree corps in, um, setting goals, realistic goals, um, for what we can do as a town moving forward. We do not have line item budgets for tree work. Um, we do not have many resources besides grants to approach, but this management plan allows us to attempt to go forward with DCR grants and, um, MVP style grants that will help with, um, with tree planting in the future. Um, as you may know, we do have some mitigation from, um, one of the other marijuana retailers where we acquired funding to plant downtown. That is something that I've been working with the Maynard Tree Corps to make sure that the residents are, um, participants in that situation. In regards to restrictions, this management plan is just a guide. It's a basic guideline for the town, um, to help, uh, acquire funding. It is, um, a planning guide for us to help monitor, um, some of the, some of the right away trees that we don't necessarily see in our everyday, um, operations that might be hazards and dangerous to the public. In no way, shape or form is this, um, a bylaw and an ordinance, which is what you're kind of referring to, David. There is, uh, mass general law and statute in regards to public shade trees. They are under the authority of the tree warden. Uh, and as such, all public shade trees, um, are, are under the town's control. They, a private entity is not allowed to remove or, um, or do any work to a town tree without approval from the tree warden in advance. Um, if they were to remove a tree illegally, there is fines associated with mass general law. So we're, we're somewhat protected under chapter 87 for master and law. There is always ordinances in the future that we might look at as a tree committee um, and present to town meeting to help kind of guide or protect our urban forestry moving forward. It is something that is actually sorely lacking in the town of Maynard. There is not a lot of vegetation management bylaws, um, or ordinances. So we kind of are using this as our first step.
Thanks, Justin. And the reason I, I asked the question relative to the, um, the private land is just really for education for those listening and, uh, who later watch this meeting. Uh, so, cause sometimes people see management plan and suddenly we're hearing, we're, we're getting phone calls that, hey, the town's now controlling where I can plant a tree and everything else. And that's not what this is at all. And I just wanted to make sure that that was made clear to, uh, anybody who was listening.
You're correct, David. This is a, a guide for, um, town entities, um, and on public property. Realistically, if you look at it a little bit, so we had, we, we received $20,000, which we identified 5,000, uh, potential tree sites that we assumed were public right away trees. So each one of these trees is not a guarantee that it's public owned. As the tree warden, I have to make those individual determinations later based off of assessors' maps and plans that we have in OMS. Um, but realistically, these are anticipated rights away trees, um, that we were able to provide these kinds of services to.
Excellent. Great work.
Thank you.
Justin, the, the, the recommended planting species list, did that take into account efforts to replant with more native species as opposed to ones that have been introduced into the area?
Jeff, that is correct. So realistically, when this, when we look at urban forestry, um, urban forestry, typically in Massachusetts and throughout the country, um, there's a strong push for native species, uh, replacement. But urban forestry creates another, uh, scenario and dynamic where certain trees survive in that harsh environment better than others. So we typically take native trees that are, um, within the New England zones. And then realistically, we kind of narrow it down to, uh, urban trees that are somewhat capable of handling those harsh conditions. So that's really what we're focusing on here. Part of, part of the situation you see with downtown trees, or you go into really harsh urban environments like Ma- Main Street and Nathan's a perfect example. These are heat islands. Um, there's not a lot of absorption rate for water and typically your concrete asphalt, um, increase the temperature twofold of what's, uh, your 90 degree heat becomes 180 and these trees have to survive in that. Typical tree species that survive in urban conditions are usually swamp trees. Um, they're used to dealing with, um, low exchange of oxygen and carbon dioxide from the ground, which is very similar, um, to what happens in, uh, in a harsh urban environment.
And are we encouraging private residents? It's sort of the opposite of David's question. If they were to plant a tree, could they use this as a guideline so that, you know, do we not want private residents planting maple trees? Cause we're, we're too, too, um, you know, mono species.
So they could always use this as a guideline. As I kind of alluded to, this is kind of an educational piece, piece for all residents. But we do not, without any bylaws or ordinances, do not have the ability to stop some private entities to plant, um, on private property. Bylaws and ordinances, um, can kind of guide this. And there is a lot of communities throughout the state that provide, um, public right of way, private, um, shade tree planting. It is, um, it's one of these situations where Massachusetts general law allows for a public entity to paint, to plant shade trees on private property adjacent to, um, public rights away, where it's that kind of cross between public, private game, but it's not realistically, uh, private game. It's, it's, the state considers it public game. Because shade trees in general actually stop the degradation of asphalt by providing shade. Asphalt degradation is, uh, impacted heavily, not just by snow and ice conditions, but actually by heat in the summer months.
And what's our current pruning cycle look like?
Um, as I alluded to, we do not have a funding source for, uh, tree abatement, removals, uh, mitigation, et cetera. We, um, we balance it through our operating budget. Uh, we have a general line under Foresty Parks and Cemetery that has to do a number of, um, situations. And right now the status quo is, um, hazard trees, priority hazard trees that are identified by myself. Um, they're vetted through a number of different, uh, means. Sometimes we get email requests. Sometimes it was highlighted through operations from the DPW staff, uh, visual monitoring, uh, monitored, uh, excuse me, monitoring. And, um, and then what I'll do is I'll actually go out and do a visual inspection. And if I deem that it needs, uh, further inspection, there's such thing as level two and level three inspections. And what happens is then those, um, those trees become a list. And, um, depending on funding, I just dictate how, uh, how we approach it.
And then the last question I had, it seemed to say that we have too many old trees. I'm assuming the solution is not to cut down old trees, but is rather than to plant young. You wouldn't.
We still have. So the reason the management plan kind of highlights that is it, it shows the past history that there's been a real lack of investment in, uh, public shade trees as a whole. Um, it kind of can pinpoint that, you know, development has either impacted that and the lack of investment in planting. Usually that's the tool that we use to apply for the DCR grants for tree planting, et cetera. Cause we could, they use that data and that information to kind of look back at, um, the lack of tree planting. And then it helps them make their determination on who they're going to pick throughout the community. I mean, not throughout the Commonwealth.
Excellent. Is there anybody else has any other questions for Justin regarding the, uh, tree, tree resource management plan? Excellent. Um, so the motion to accept the management plan as presented, David?
Yes.
Chris? You're still muted. He's nodding yes. Does that count? Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, and I am a yes as well. So moving on to item B, which is the fiscal year 21 pavement management plan. Uh, move to approve the FY 21 pavement management plan as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, David. Uh, and I'm just going to defer right to Justin for this.
All right. Good evening, Justin DeMarco, DPW Director again. As the memo alludes to, this is our yearly, um, pavement management plan, um, that presented to the board of selectmen. Uh, let me pull it up quick, just to reiterate some of the facts here. So we're looking to have the board of selectmen approve this plan as such. As you may know, that we have, uh, Beta Management, an engineering firm that runs our pavement management system. Um, and in the winter, over the winter, we had a review of that, um, upcoming FY 21 year, which is now. And let me scroll down. Beta highlighted, um, several roadways that have gone into the reclamation, um, process, which is a full, uh, a full redo of a road where they grind the entire, um, top coat and, um, binder coat down to the gravel pack, re-smooth it out and then pave it. Um, this is something that we need to avoid in the future. Reclamation roadway projects tend to be the most costly. Uh, milling overlays are a process where they grind off just the top coat, where the binder underneath is actually still, um, usable and they replace potentially just the top coat at a much cheaper rate. Unfortunately, Maynard is falling behind with our pavement management. As I would tell you, a lot of communities are within the state. So, um, we've put together the memo in regards to Beta's recommendations. And as you move further down, you will see that, um, for FY 21, the appropriations that we have based off of a number of factors is realistically, we can only rely on our chapter 90 funding. As you all know, that we had a lot of wants and needs, um, from throughout the community, such as school roofs, et cetera. So there was a reason that we did not, um, we did not pursue free cash money for pavement at that point because we, as the DPW Director and Facilities Manager, also understand the priorities in other situations. So at this point, we knew we could rely on our chapter 90 funding, but I don't want to lose track of the goal in the future, which is to hopefully add on to our yearly chapter 90 money with, um, you know, some free cash, et cetera, to try to keep up with our, um, road degradation throughout the community. But as you see, we have a pretty intense plan. Uh, myself and Wayne Amico, uh, worked pretty hard on this. Due to last year's estimates from Beta, we're kind of using a little bit of experience and gut feeling that their estimates tend to be high, which is okay. So that's why you'll see that our recommendation is over what we have, um, funded. We're hoping to secure the bids with, um, advantageous pricing. The way that we set up, um, our bid package will be street by street, as you kind of see down here where it goes from, we'll take Brook Street from Conquered Street to Charles, and then we broke it up again from Brook Street from Charles to Jethro. The reason we did this is for flexibility, but at the same time, it's a procurement practice where we might be able to, uh, draw some, uh, bigger vendors in and get a more advantageous price. But in the end, it allows us flexibility to focus on the priorities. And as some of you may remember, uh, last year's pavement management plan included, um, Brook Street and Durant. Um, and unfortunately they were removed due to, um, financial constraints. So they have skyrocketed to our beginning and our priority, um, for FY 21. But realistically, we're only focusing on what we couldn't get done in FY 20 with the funding we have. So we're actually going a year behind. We have not put this out to bid as it has not been approved and we might be able to, uh, get some really good advantageous pricing. And if so, there's a number of ad alternates that allow us to focus on, um, Beta's recent 2020, um, recommendations, which is actually the rest of Durant Out. But if you look down how we broke, broke out the ad alternates, you'll see ad alternate two is Durant Out. We did it in the same manner. Summer Street to Rio, Rio to Brian Way, et cetera. So we're trying to get as much pavement reconstruction as we can with the funding that we have. reconstruction as we can with the funding that we have.
Justin, you're just saying that our share of chapter 90 is what's going to be allocated to this project completely?
Yes, correct. That's correct, Armand.
I was a little disappointed, even though I completely understand, but I know that I think it was the Senate, either Senate and the House or one or the other sent it to the governor's office with a $300 million chapter 90 plan and that got cut to $200 million. So little bit extra would have helped.
So we are anticipating, part of the reason that we're, we're focusing on the plan as a little financial heavier than what we're anticipating is we were actually, we received $20,000 to $30,000 extra in chapter 90 last year. So if that becomes the same scenario would be set up from our bid package to move forward if we had to, if that happens. I do not anticipate it. It's usually one of the biggest first budget cuts in the state.
Justin, this is David Dump. Do you have any insight as to the market relative to bidding? Do you have any idea if the bidding is coming in under what we might expect versus a bumper crop year where it might be coming in higher? Cause these guys, I mean, who knows, these guys may be strung out. You see a lot of contractors that are busy during this, these times, but do you have any insight into that?
Yeah, David, usually at this time we'd be competing against every community, including the state. The state usually holds all the leverage because they have a lot more money. Unfortunately, the state is in the same budget constraints as a lot of communities. So, so at this point in time, the market is ripe for larger companies that might not be paying for the state to try to keep their equipment leases up and running. If you look at, I think there's an email attachment to kind of go into detail of why we are looking at the way, looking at the procurement process, the way we are is we're actually trying to entice a larger company to come out here and maybe fill a gap between large projects with something that if they mobilize their equipment, realistically, the material costs are minute and their labor costs are minute. It's really the mobilization and the changeover that they don't want to lose in other jobs. But if the job market from the state is not right, then we might be able to get advantageous pricing. We are hoping.
Yeah. And one last comment. You may recall at last year's meeting when we had the same discussion on, on streets. I emphasized my thought process that, you know, at that meeting, I think we had some discussion about, you know, why don't we switch this? We get more for the bang, you know, whatever. And I expressed my desire to follow the plan that was established. So although it's disappointing to, as Justine sort of mentioned earlier, that, you know, that we can't go further to catch up beyond what we were scheduled for last year or end or for this year. I am heartened by the fact that there is a plan and that the plan's being followed. And so I assume that we have a plan for already in line for next year that we'll see for those streets that are in line to come up. And we're doing it the way, you know, in, in a unified planned way, rather than just piecemeal based on, well, let's go here because somebody might have yelled louder than this person.
No, David, you're correct. That's actually why we go with beta. The PCI index really identifies the degradation in pavement. It takes the bias out of it. I know that some do understand, don't necessarily understand why there's certain streets that are priority over others. But there's a number of factors that go into that travel. How many cars travel that roadway? What the potential impact is and trying to get ahead of the reclamation part. That's due, sometimes we take coring samples of the road construction that was done by developers. Certain developers in the 50s and 70s might not have put down the grade, the binder material at the inches for the standard at the time, and they might've been accepted by the town, et cetera. So there's a number of factors that play into the selection. But the PCI index is used by almost every engineering firm within the state and beyond. It is something that a majority of communities use to eliminate that biased situation.
Anybody else have anything for Justin regarding the pavement management? Excellent. All right. Well then we'll move forward to approve as presented. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Excellent. And we will continue on to item C, which is a motion to approve the out of town water service connection to the U S Fish and Wildlife Service Acidat Wildlife Refuge Maintenance Facility. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. And Justin, I want to defer to you again.
All right. Hopefully it's the last one tonight. We'll see. So Justin Demarka, DPW director. We received, I don't want to say a formal request when I started, but we, there was already in the works. Mr. Thomas Eagle reached out to Tim Malali while he was acting director in between Aaron McClosko and myself for the potential for out of town water services. Through that process, it kind of got lost in, in, in operation as a whole. So when I came on, myself and Gary McCarthy reapproached Mr. Eagle to see if his request was still something that they were interested in. Just based off of the non responsiveness from the department because of just staffing levels as a whole. So Mr. Eagle alluded that they were still interested, but they weren't sure if they were going to reach out to Maynard. They were looking at many options and one of them was Mass D P and their own well source. Mass D P, they had a, an illegally drilled well on the refuge that Mass D P caught, ordered to shut down immediately. And Mr. Eagle and U S Federal Wildlife petitioned to have that put back online and Mass D P refused it. So their options now at this point are to connect to a public water supply. The only adjacent public water supply that is acceptable for the U S Fish and Wildlife is Maynard and Sudbury. Sudbury's route is much further away than Maynard's. Realistically, Mr. Eagle is, has applied for a grant through the federal Army Corps of Engineers and received one. And it is to potentially hook up to a public drinking water supply such as Maynard's. So we, myself, Gary McCarthy, Mike Hatch and Tim Malali met with Mr. Eagle and his team, which consisted of a number of engineers from Army Corps, Army Corps of Engineers, to just kind of talk about what their expectations were. We didn't really know because Mr. Eagle wasn't sure what they wanted. So we had to kind of vet through what the request was. Did he understand what he's asking for, et cetera? So we're at the point where we feel comfortable. And I told Mr. Eagle that his next steps, because of it is, it is considered an out of town water service request, that he needs to formally ask permission of the Water and Sewer Commissioners, who are the select board, to approve the connection for out of town water service. If you read the memo, there is conditions for the motion of approval that I've put in there because there is a number of factors that have to be checked off before we can fully approve this request. One is the engineering. At this point right now, we're at the 0% engineering phase. We're at conceptual design only, which is the roadmap that is attached in the board docs as well. And what I'm looking for is a formal request of the board to consider a tentative agreement to allow the out of town water service connection request for the U S Fish and Wildlife pending all town-aimated water rules and regulations that are applicable to this project are met, including fees paid, engineering and peer review approved, including final player, plan review satisfied by the DPW director and final approval by the Water and Sewer Commissioners, who are the select board. So at this point, what I'm trying to help Mr. Eagle with is they are on time constraints due to the current, due to the grant. They want to make sure that they are moving in the right direction. So if the select board does not approve this, they will just stop their process altogether, potentially and approach a different avenue. If the board, the select board is willing to entertain this, they will continue to move the process. During that process, there is a number of peer reviews through our sewer and rules and regulations that we control, being the water utility. And at any time within that, if they don't meet our peer review processes or our, or a permitting, et cetera, we can deny them anyways. And then at the end, they will still have to come back for final approval of the design plan, et cetera, once vetted through the DPW and our consultant engineers. So at this point, I believe that you have a conceptual plan of the map. I don't know if you're all looking at that. So there's two highlighted routes. One is Taylor Road, which is directly through the Wildgrass Wildlife Preserve. And it is, the attachment point would be our well for water treatment facility. That is in kind of like a greenish blue line. And then the second proposed route is yellow, which is from the Winter Street Garage Connection, which would be down the Acidat River Rail Trail and onto White's Pond Road. The maroon line that actually looks like it goes through the middle of the woods from Winter Street is our existing raw water line from White's Pond. That's on there for a reason. That's part of the, the easement argument we have moving forward, et cetera. I think most of you know the White's Pond situation. So our recommendation to U S Fish and Wildlife and Army Corps of Engineers is to go the path of Taylor Road. We believe this is the better situation. It cuts through Taylor Road is all gravel road is minimum impact from an infrastructure standpoint. There is environmental impacts. The, this route would require the Army Corps Engineer to do a number of environmental impact studies, such as some of the things we've been doing for our well for A onlining, which could take a while. The other alternative route of the River Rail Trail has its own issues. Major infrastructure on a brand new paved rail trail. So that would all have to be removed and then replaced. At the same time, there's a bridge there from the old railroad tracks that will take some significant structural engineering processes that will have to happen. And the reason we picked Taylor Road is we would like to try to minimize the infrastructure impact. And we believe Taylor Road's process kind of helps with a number of situations. As we talked with Mr. Eagle, we highlighted that we suggested this is not a service request, but an actual main request through our rules and regulations. And as such, we would, we would actually prefer that fire suppression be included in this, which is fire hydrants. And the reason that we're preferring that method is because this area has been highlighted on our MVP process as a high risk of wildfire. And this would actually allow our fire staff to potentially control a wildfire in this area through our own utility. So there's some benefits to going to Taylor Route that we believe offset the benefits of the rail trail. Other than that, I leave it up to the board.
Okay. Any questions for Justin?
So the, the request, um, maybe I'm trying to figure out what is potable water? What does that mean?
Drinkable water, Armand.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, yeah. So potable water means you can put it in a pot and you could cook with it.
Got you.
Justin, given the, the discussions we've had recently about our capacity and everything else, and I see in your memo that this is the equivalent of four, we could estimate the equivalent of four homes. My first question would be, how are we relative to giving, giving away water that is already at a, at a precious limitation for us as it is? I, I want to do what we can to be good neighbors, especially to the federal government, because we might be looking for some assistance from them relative to, you know, easements or whatever in the future and want to show ourselves to be friendly neighbors. So I'm, I'm sensitive to that issue. So let me go through my list of, of a couple of questions. And then secondly, I assume that every aspect of this, of this project would be at the expense of the grant and not at the expense of Maynard. That there would be no out of pockets for us, no hidden costs down the road. And oh, we had to dig this road up. We didn't expect to. While we're down there, we might as well do X, Y, and Z, and suddenly it turned into a major project for us. I want to make sure that we don't have any hidden costs along the way. And then lastly, I assume that they would also, when this happens, and I don't know how long the whole project would take. From what it sounds like, it's, it's not going to be next week. But I assume they would be paying out of, out of, out of town rates on their water usage as well.
David, good questions. So we'll start with the water capacity issue. If you kind of go back to a number of our presentations, one, the planning board, and even when we presented some of the water capacity issues, I alluded to our concerns weren't necessary in, in fill projects such as 42 Maine or 115 Gruber. Yes, they have an impact on our water system, but the impact is much less of a problem or a burden as say a 129 Parker or a BRS of 500 units, et cetera. We need, when we focus on our water capacity, it's the potential of 500 units, 1,000 units, 1,500 units of living space that is something that should potentially give us pause. Projects such as this, our rules and regulate, our sewer rules and regulations are very precise. And the trigger is 1,000 gallons. So 1,000 gallons is realistically almost a single home. It's a single family home. So everything triggers this peer review process at this point for us, which is every ounce of peer review is paid by the applicant. So the federal wildlife will pay for this either through their grants or through their own operating costs. However, they prefer to pay for that, that's on them. The town does not pay for any of the peer review processes. The only burden that we've had so far is our one hour meeting and the route design that we recommended. That is part of doing daily business. We do that with every small development. We kind of start out with, you know, the basic concept. But other than that, all of the actual engineering is the burden of the applicant. There's no hidden cost. They pay for everything, including the installation of all pipes, et cetera, tap in fees, everything. They tap into the water main. They pay for our inspection fees, our employees to be on site to monitor that. They pay for every ounce of the system. What ends up happening in the long run, in the, you know, 20, 30 year situation is that the town is responsible for all right of way distribution lines. And the private owner is responsible for their service lines. This is somewhat of a unique situation, but our rules and regs cover both. I consider this a potential water main extension with such, it allows us the right of the easement. And I could also argue that this is a service main request, meaning a service just for this dwelling where the burden is on the U S Fish and Wildlife. You could argue it in both ways. Our regulations cover both. So at this point, there is very minimal cost to Maynard and the Maynard current customers. And yes, they would be paying the out of town rates. Every one of our out of town customer is our out of town rates. I know some people do get confused when they see the rate changes and they see the out of town rate that applies to our customers that actually have services not within Maynard. So they will be subject to that and all applicable hookup fees, et cetera.
Thank you.
Justin, is there any way to have this agreement structured in such a way that would assert our right to the pipeline that goes to White's Pond? That we want to, that we believe we have the easement on?
Jeff, I like your thinking. So yes and no. So we would, we would go back to our rules and regs as I alluded to with the water main extension. I would argue that. But I think David alluded to it best. I think providing a good neighbor service and working together hand in hand here. We've been in touch and communication. I believe this is a good collaboration for the town. Not only for just the service and the potential gains in revenue for water, but for the long run. You know, some of you know that the long run game might still be White's Pond. It's far away, but we still need to start planning for it now. And this is the gap that bridges that. The U S Army is not coming back and taking that property. It is most likely never going to change hands again, once it's determined a reserve under the protection. So realistically, our new partner is not the U S Army anymore. It is the Federal Wildlife Reserve and the Department of State. So this is a good starting point.
My question is for Justin, is there a Uh, my question is uh, for Justin, is there a way for us to um, I mean personally, I look at it and um, the one concern I have about the second option of going down by the rail trail is obviously that we have a brand new rail trail. Um, is there a way for us to say that it's preferable that or that that we want them to do the Taylor Road connection? Can we send that back to them like that?
You can make your contingent approval on um, however the board feels. Um, with this regards, you have all the power. Um, our rules and regs determine that you can say yes or no. You can shut off service at any time. Um, our rules and regs for water utility and sewer utility are very strong. Uh, you can make this contingent on a number of of effects. That's kind of why I put the contingency plan on the motion for acceptance. You can tell um, the uh, US Wildlife Service that they can only use Taylor Road if you deem that's appropriate and within what your uh, context is, you can determine a number of factors. So it is up to the board.
Well, I was under the impression that you already recommended and suggested Taylor Road. That was the best option.
Correct, but I did not, the motion was not to make a contingent upon that. I did want to allow the Wildlife Refuge um, to present it both ways. They were high on both ways. They had, they had pros and cons for both. So I did not want to uh, necessarily streamline that process because in the end, both ways are something that can be done. There is not, we can't, you have the ability to say no based off of however you feel. But if they were to choose the rail trail, they are going to be held liable to replace anything that they do. But as the board with the power um, for the Water and Sewer Commissioners, you have the right to say no. The contingency plan is this or not.
But then I like Justine's suggestion. I think we should include that in our, you know, approval process.
Presumably, if we use, if we uh, were to do the rail trail, um, they're not going to be able to do that type of work without shutting down the rail trail. And uh, that's a huge um, asset to our community is the rail trail, and I don't want to disrupt it. Uh, I think it would be uh, probably a two-year big dig project. And uh, you know, that would be the lack of use of that of that asset for a long period of time. So I don't think that would be fair to the community. Uh, especially given that at the end of the day, there's really not a huge benefit to the residents of Maynard for this other than potential future goodwill that we may get out of it from, from what I'm, from, you know, what I'm seeing. So.
I think partnerships are a good, I are, even if we don't see it immediately, I think that setting up something and and looking in the future is is a is important at this point.
Justin, sorry, Chris, go ahead.
It seems to me that the motion that Justine read is a little premature because that's asking us to approve the water service connection, but that's not what we're doing. We just, this is just the beginning of the process, isn't it?
Yes, but so i- if you go back, Chris, I I kind of, part of the issue that they're having with the typical auto out of town water connection service, it's really usually a resident just looking to hook onto a pipe. This one's a little unique because there's grant processes and other entities involved. Um, the federal government Army Corps Engineers does not want to continue down a road that they are going to be denied right away or in the future, or they don't even believe that uh, Maynard's going to entertain this. So realistically, it's a, it's a tentative agreement to allow this service based off of all of the recommendations that I put forth, and then you can add even more contingencies with on that uh, with on that recommendation as well. You have the authority as the Water and Sewer Commissioners. Um, even in the end game, I would tell you, even if they get to the hundred percent engineering process and this board does not deem that it's appropriate, you can still deny the request. Um, you have all the rights to do that. They're just looking for, you know, something that the state normally looks for is to make sure that they have a green light for the most part to continue their processes.
Well, I I would think they would have a green light based on the conversation, but to that, you know, there's, there's several questions that David asked and Armand asked and and everybody, you know, everybody involved has asked some questions that are kind of open ended and unanswered. They'd have to be resolved before we can make that decision, I think. I don't, I don't see how. I mean, I can, I can accept the idea that, you know, the concept of moving forward with whoever's negotiating with these guys and having the discussions to get to a point and give that kind of okay. But I don't know, the most, I'm just referring to just the motion in front of us because the motion in front of us, you know, kind of is different than what we're talking about.
Maybe I'm looking at something, oh, you're talking, okay, sorry. So Chris, maybe I'm alluding to that wrong. So I'm actually looking at my memo request in the bottom paragraph.
Your memo request is different than the motion that is in the in the agenda that Justine read and was seconded, and that's what we're discussing. So I understand your memo is different. I have no problem with the memo, but the motion is out of whack because the motion is agreeing to it. I can, I can agree to your memo, but I can't agree to the motion.
So would it make it better if we um, change the motion to uh, be the end of the memo? Which is um, to request uh, the motion to tentatively agree to allow out of water, out of-
That's supposed to be out of town water service.
Out of town water service connection. Um, pending all Town of Maynard water rules, regulations that apply, blah, blah, blah. And also um, uh, contingent on them picking the Taylor Road path or something like that. Does that sound like a, I mean, I'll formalize it more like more, more, but does that sound better?
Yeah, I think I I I think so. I I just think, I I think if we agree, if we were to, if we were to approve this motion, we're locked into agreeing to whatever happens. Not, there's no mention of contingencies. There's no mention of um, you know, approvals or anything else. This is the approval. You know, as it was read originally. So I think we have to, I think, you know, respectfully, we have to change it to something that um, you know, we tentatively agreed in that that should be enough to allow them to move forward, shouldn't it, Justin?
Yeah, that's, that's why I put the tentative um, approach and then the rules and regs, which allow you a a number of uh, powers and authority within the rules and regs to deny based on a number of situations. Realistically, in the end, once they start moving forward to the twenty-five seventy-five percent phase of design, they're going to have to do their own water impact study. That's per the rules and regs. And that water impact study will be peer reviewed from our process to see what their request, their formal request of actual water is. Um, and then we can deny it based off of what we see is just because the the theory here is only to provide water for maintenance facility and RV sites. In the end, they're going to have to put this on paper, and if that drastically changes, we have the ability to deny it based off of our rules and regs. So that's why I put the the tentative agreement with all of the restrictions set forth. And then again, you can add even more restrictions as Justine alluded to where, you know, it's, it's based only on the Taylor Road route. Um, you could give options that where we will not allow for the rail trail route. But if you have secondary or third options outside of Taylor, we will consider um, vetting it through peer review and the DPW and consider approving different routes. But you have the ability to focus on this in multiple stages if you really want to. We can meet on this on a number of platforms. This is really the initial approach.
I think we just need to get the word tentative and subject to final approval in the motion and we should be.
So actually, so uh, just double checking procedurally, Greg, do I need to do something if I'm, if we're not going to vote on the motion that I, that was made and seconded?
So, yeah, so who made the motion? You did?
I did. Just moved to amend the motion to language that meets everybody's.
Right. It's messy if you vote to to disapprove that. It's better-
Yeah.
Okay.
We could withdraw the motion.
Yeah, you could do that too.
And then, and then re- restate a new motion.
We do it.
Whatever it may be.
Yeah, you should do that. So just um, yeah, make a motion to withdraw and then.
Okay, so I am going to move to withdraw the motion to approve the out of town water service connection to the US Fish and Wildlife Service Assavet Wildlife Refuge Maintenance Facility. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. You could have said as written, I guess. I don't know.
No, no, no. So I'm I'm withdrawing first.
Okay.
I'm going to withdraw first. Um, any discussion on that before I ask for votes? All right, David?
Yeah, I vote to withdraw.
Vote to withdraw. Uh, Chris?
Yes.
All right, Armand?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So that is the motion that has been withdrawn. And I'm going to make a new motion. Uh, and I move to re, I move for the board to consider to tentatively agree to allow the out of town water service connection request of Tom R. Eagle, US Fish and Wildlife, pending all Town of Maynard water rules and regulations that are applicable to this project and are met, including fees, sorry, I continue to shut up, uh, paid engineering and peer review approved, including final plan review, satisfied by the Department of Public Works Director and the Select Board. Um, contingent on them using the Taylor Road route. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um, I I'm gonna go to Jeff for discussion. I think there are some other questions as well. But I know, I think you had a question before.
Well, it's a moot point if we're going to do the contingent on the Taylor Road route. Is now the appropriate time to add that contingency? Or do we?
It was added to the new motion.
Yes.
Sorry, I, yeah, I did add it to the new motion. Um, do you have a problem with us adding it to the new motion or did you want to?
I don't want the project not to go forward if it turns out the northern route is the only way and then they they dodge it, go somewhere else. I would still want to leave us open to consider that. So if it's, if it's right, if it's a good project for us to build that relationship, I don't want to spoil it with that. But if that's, that's a minor concern, if that's not how the rest of the group feels.
So Justin, just real quick, procedurally, if we go forward and they say that there is a problem with the Taylor Road route, is there a way for you to to come back to us and say they've come up with another route?
We can always re, re, you know, approve the motion. If they, if, yeah, we, we still have the option to to enter a whole new motion if we wanted to. So that's fine if we want to put that contingency and if they come back.
That's, so that's kind of why I alluded to, if you just say Taylor Road as one, you're eliminating potential other options.
Yeah.
Um, you do have the ability through the peer review process where we can um, actually review both routes. They will actually plan and engineer for both routes. Um, we can make a contingent that we prefer the Taylor Road route. Um, and then we could look at it through um, through the engineering process, the environmental impact etc. They will come up with cost estimates that we will peer review and confirm. And then we could present both options if the board would would prefer that method.
I think that sounds better to keep the options open, but that's my preference.
Okay.
That's a good point, Jeff. I mean, it is a good point.
Yep, no, so, so uh, Justin, so I don't have to say this a fourth time. What, what do I say at the final after I withdraw this next motion?
So I would say that the route, both routes are in the board docs right now. I would, I would just go back to the motion um, for the tentative agreement within um, my memo.
Yeah.
And I believe the two routes are on public uh, board docs. So that is the two options that we have going forward. So you can always make the contingencies later on based off the rules and regs and the peer review process.
Well, you may want to, you may want to add the word preferred. I mean, that cannot hurt.
I think though, you know.
No, no, okay.
So next question, point of order, one more time, is can I just move to amend?
Yes, so you have to do two votes now. You have to vote, you have to approve the amendment to the motion that's on the floor, the primary motion. And then if everyone agrees with that amendment, then you have to vote to the new vote, like, now, now you're altering the the motion that's on the floor, and then you have to approve that. So you have to approve the amendment and then the motion.
I'm going to bed. Sorry about that. Okay. So I am going to move to amend this previous motion.
Yes.
On, and I will, uh, the previous motion will be tentatively agree to allow the out of town water service connection request of Tom R. Eagle, US Fish and Wildlife, pending all Town of Maynard water rules and regulations that are applicable to this project and are met, including fees paid, engineering and peer review approved, including final pan, plan review, satisfied by the Department of Public Works Director and the Select Board. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Excellent. Uh, David?
Yes.
All right, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So now I do know that there is at least one other question out there. Um, I want to double check before we take a vote on this. Um, does anybody, anyone else uh, from the public?
Do.
No.
But I have a question, Madam Chair. It's Linda Thayer, fourteen Chandler Street.
Hi, yes.
Hi, um, I am concerned that the document from the US Fish and Wildlife does not specify any of the details of what this, the use will be. I I don't believe it said anything about um, how large the facility is. There's no specifications from the US Fish and Wildlife. Justin's document was very detailed, and I appreciate that. But there's nothing formal from the Fish and Wildlife asking for this. Um, and another question I have is who's responsible for the maintenance down the line? You know, whether it's five years, ten years, twenty years. Um, and just one other comment I do want to make is when there's, there are three or four households in town who have access to the water, we do collect taxes on that property. Um, and this is strictly out of town rates, which in my opinion are far too low. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Justin, do you want to speak, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, so kind of um, as I alluded to, they're, they're in the zero design phase, engineering design phase. So realistically, um, Tom from the Federal Wildlife Reserve is not an engineer, not a utility engineer. And the Army Corps Engineers will put together the plan um, that will be peer reviewed through our utility consultants etc. That will actually highlight um, the actual usage, the projected usage etc. I'm sure if you look back at some of our uh, water capacity um, memos, PowerPoint presentations etc., you've seen like what a, what a impact study looks like from a water resource. Um, it highlights, you know, usage based off of projected um, build outs per square footage based off of projections of office space versus living quarters etc. So once that um, design comes out, we'll actually be able to um, to kind of zero down on the the actual usage. But we, we have that covered through the tentative motion um, because they have to meet all our sewer regulations, our, I mean, our water regulations, um, the peer review process etc. And because of our regulations and them being so strict, we can deny service at any time we want throughout this process based off of those documentation. Um, one of the biggest triggers in our um, regulations is that thousand gallon limit. As I have alluded to the board, that that's a typical single family home. So realistically, one to two RVs is going to trigger the thousand mark, which automatically triggers uh, the engineering and um, the water capacity um, performance documentation and uh, data that has to be provided by the Army Corps Engineers. In regards to um, who is responsible for maintenance, uh, we did kind of touch base on this, but I'll remind everybody that um, any service, water service that is on private property, not the Town of Maynard's public right of way, is the responsibility of the private property owner. Um, so if there is a service main break that's in your front lawn and not of the public right of way, it is the responsibility of the customer, not the Town of Maynard. There will be maintenance that's required, such as it is to every uh, utility customer that we have out there. Um, sometimes that maintenance could be um, a situation of flushing that we do on a normal basis in customers' houses etc. That's all included in our operational plans etc. Um, I do not, Linda, did you have a third question? I cannot remember.
Um, no, it was a comment. Uh, but again, the, what's concerning me is that the document from the Fish and Wildlife does not specify any use at all. It's a very, if I remember correctly, I was trying to find it just now and I didn't pull it up. Um, it's, it's just a very generic. It doesn't specify anything as to what their, what their use is. And I think, I think the town is, it would be right to ask them to put it on their letterhead and their writing, their request, exactly what they're proposing. Because I I've, I've sat through enough meetings over the years to know that once money does, is, you know, is spent, it's very difficult for our staff and our volunteers to stop- our staff and our volunteers to stop anything because money has been invested. So I do, I do have a concern that, that we'll start going down that line and then have a hard time coming back. So I think, I don't think it's an unreasonable request. Thank you.
So Lynda, I would tell you that this situation is completely different than planning board situations, et cetera. As the utility owner, the Town of Maynard has all rights to deny service. We could technically deny service right now to any one of our customers if the board deemed necessary for back payment, delinquency, et cetera. The rules and regulations for the utility are much stronger and different than special permit and development agreements that happen throughout the community and other aspects. Part of the reason for the sewer regulations and the water regulations being so strict is that there will be times in the future that the board might have to actually shut off service due to emergency situations. We might actually have to put out letters if we run into capacity issues in the future where we make determinations that we eliminate outside service. We have that right and that ability. Our rules and regs are very strong in that category.
So I appreciate all that, Justin. I do have to reiterate that I don't think asking for a very specific, asking them to give us a document with their, it doesn't have to be specific to the letter like you're talking. I, I don't mean that, but just, it, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to ask anything.
So my quick question, if I can jump in real quick, is, Justin, is there a way that, you know, obvious, so what I think I'm getting from this is that the re, the, the Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife need to know that this is a possibility. We have said, yes, you can use, by, if we vote tonight, that, in, in the affirmative, yes, you can use water. But then, that's when they come back and they actually do the design. And then they actually figure out officially how much, how much they're going to use.
Correct. That is correct. Absolutely correct.
So my question to that end is, is there a way that we can have that document come back to us once it's been vetted? So it's like, we're giving initial approval right now to move ahead to start the process. I think is that kind of what?
So if you go, yep, so if you go back, the reason that we put into the tentative agreement is that all rules and regulations that are applicable to this project, and I actually highlighted a couple of them, which is the thousand gallons or more existing building or, or new building require water system impact assessment prepared. This is what would highlight what the use is, what the projected use rates are at peak, what the PSI is, et cetera. And if you go back to the tentative agreement after the rules and regs, that this project met, including fees paid, engineering and peer review approved, meaning that we approved that we have enough water capacity. And then the final plan review would be vetted through the public works and presented to the select board through our peer review processes, et cetera. So at that point, we can, we can approve it in the final, but they have to get through a number of situations within the DPW before they even get back to you and meeting water capacity assessment documentation, et cetera, has to go through the DPW as a whole. This is very common practice. If this wasn't an out of town service and this was in town, we'll say 115 Grober, et cetera, this whole process would, would be done by the DPW. There is, the water and sewer regulations do not require the water and sewer commissioners to vet any of this within in-town customers. This is something that we do quite often. You actually be surprised. This is very common for us. We force any one of our developers that are doing a change of use, a simple change from a single family to a two-family triggers this regulation. And it is some, it is a very common practice. So we have the ability to stop it at any time throughout the application process. What they're looking for here is somewhat of an inkling that Maynard is willing to entertain an out, out of town service request. And then what they'll do is they'll, they'll actually move forward with the engineering process and they'll have hard numbers, et cetera, for us.
So if they come back and say, if they come back and, you know, the estimate is, is that equivalent of four houses, right? Or let's say, if, if they come back and their design shows that, wait a minute, it's gonna be the equivalent of 100 houses, we can, we can stop that dead in its tracks if we have to.
I could stop it before I even bring it to you. So they have to go through me and then my recommendation would go to the board. But realistically, there's two phases of stopping that. And you're not incorrect. The second they go over the thousand mark, if we believe that they're trying to skirt us, our rules and regs are very strong on that, that we would be, that's why we have the peer review process and that is why the applicant pays for that, is so that it never gets missed. And we would highlight that immediately, that your, your initial conversation with us was XYZ, but you're trying to put in ABC, we would deny it. Or, you know, realistically, because this is a bigger customer request, I would bring it to the board with my denial recommendation in the memo, and then we would talk about it as we are now.
And, and to Lynda's point, I, I know that they're requesting for the maintenance facility, but we don't know how big the facility is. So that's why we're trying to figure out.
So Armand, they don't either. So, so this is, when I say this is the infancy stage, they are try, they have a maintenance facility and Tom from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife does not know anything about this. The Army Corps engineer is, is every, is gonna do every ounce of the research for this, the engineering, et cetera. They have proposed RV sites that they are not necessarily, they don't know how many they, they have at this time because they're still building that facility. The maintenance facility is still being, still being enlarged and determined what the, the long-term goal is for the vision of the reserve as a whole. So realistically, what they give us in documentation will be for this request only. So I know there was another question of, okay, if we give them a blanket tentative agreement, could they then go add in a visitor's center that's gonna take out 5,000 more gallons? Absolutely not. Whatever they officially give us is the one-time request. Any request above and beyond that re-triggers the entire application process all over again. We have the right to deny the next thing from them or the next thing after that. We even have the right to deny this one. So.
Okay.
One last question, Justin, is the Taylor Road that is identified on your chart in green or in the photo, is that all Maynard Taylor Road?
So, yes, so the facility is, if you guys ever wanna kinda do a little bit of research and go on Google Earth, so you see where the crossroads of the yellow line and that kinda greenish line. So the facility, there's a little carve out of no trees that looks like a parking lot and then there looks like a little dirt area right to the left of it. That's where the facility is. The Taylor Road access is realistically, yes, Maynard property, but, you know, Federal Reserve property.
Okay, the reason, the reason I ask that is, I'm thinking ahead. And if any of that property is stow property, is there a risk that they will then say somewhere down the road, hook us in? And are we stuck to hook them in even though it's, it's stow property? And we may not wanna have the capacity to give them the water, but just because the pipes go by, there it is. And so we give it to them. Secondly, would there be any impact on Maynard residents that live along Taylor Road already that may need to hook up? Is, or is that an issue at all? And then lastly, I think was where Lynda Thayer had asked about for maintenance, if it's in stow, if any of that property is in stow and it's our piping going through, are we gonna be on the hook for fixing a break in stow somewhere down the road? Because it happens to be our pipes that go to the, to the facility.
So I guess I'm trying to take this backwards for a second. So Taylor Road, there is no housing that, that is on Taylor Road that I am aware of. This is, this is just a dirt road through the middle of the reserve. It's an access and maintenance road that they use to kinda go from one location to the other. In regards to?
Not develop, is it, is it ever developable or is that part of the, okay, all right.
Yeah, that's all the reserve. This is, this is the turtle habitat, our potential problem right there. That's the turtle habitat. So that's also why they're not, they might not prefer this method because they have to do environmental impacts. But realistically, this is undevelopable.
So it's not, or it's not, Taylor Road, as shown on that map, is not a residential street?
Correct.
And never, and as far as you can tell, never will be?
Right. I, I, once this land was put in charge of the Department of State and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, I do not see it changing hands anyway in other directions. Usually when it's highlighted as a, a federal protection area for environmental, such as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, it never gets out of that situation unless we go to World War III and the Army takes it back.
All right, so it's not Maynard, I see at the top of the map, Maynard's Taylor Road, and that's where I'm getting confused. That's not Maynard's Taylor Road. That is Stowe's Taylor Road. Or A, A Road known as Taylor Road, that's dirt, that's not lived on by anybody.
That's correct. Yeah, you're looking at the Taylor Road up by the Crow Park. That is not the same.
Yeah, not the same Taylor, okay, that's where my confusion came in. All righty, okay.
Absolutely not. And then I think you asked if we were to allow this pipeline to go over to the maintenance facility, if Stowe would have the right to just automatically hook in?
Yeah.
No, you have all the power. Anything outside of Maynard is, is, has to be final approval from the Water and Sewer Commissioners. So no, every request, any house that requests service has to go through this process that triggers over the thousand gallon mark. So if this was in Maynard, they would have to go through this entire process with the DPW. Anything outside of Maynard, Stowe, Acton, Sudbury, wherever we go in the future, that has to be vetted with final approval through the Water and Sewer Commissioners. So we'll just say like White's Pond Road, Riverside Park area. If someone wanted to hook up there, they have to go through this entire process the same way that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife is. And if they wanted to extend service from this intersection all the way up to Riverside Park, extending beyond, they would be, they would have to pay for the water main extension. They would have to pay for the service extension. And if the water main that was put in by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife was not large enough to give the adequate amount of water pressure for the existing houses that wanna tie in, those houses would be liable to replace the entire system going all the way back to the waste, the water treatment facility and upgrade the pipe system. So we hold all the cards when it comes to that. That, the same thing applies in Maynard. So if, we'll just take 129 Parker. If the water main on Parker Street was on eight inch main and not capable of providing the water that 129 Parker needed, 129 Parker would have been on the hook to increase that water pipe capacity to meet their demands or we would have denied them. The same process happens here. Do you understand what I'm saying? So then, I think you have one more question, David.
No, I, I, I think you've answered all of my questions. Thank you. But one last, just an observation. If we can, as a board, going forward, when we have presentations like this, if there's a way to share the screen so that people that are watching that can't see this stuff and doesn't, don't have necessarily board docs up or whatever, I'm sure some people out there listening are totally lost as to what the heck we're talking about.
Yeah, sure, we can, yeah, we can do that.
All right, so anybody else have anything? Ken, you're muted, but go ahead.
So, just a quick question. If, so these are eight inch mains that would be connecting the maintenance facility to, to our main system, correct?
Potentially, because we're at the zero design engineering. So like, so just based off my experience and Gary McCarthy's experience and the conversations that we had with U.S. Army Corps and Mr. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Tom, just the perception of what they're looking for, our initial approach is this is over the thousand gallon mark a day. But RV seasonal sites are not equivalent to a potential single family home in regards to 110 gallons per person. They tend to be less. And maintenance facilities tend to fall in the office category of 10 gallons, depending on potential.
I, I understand. So you're, you're, what you're saying is tentatively, the plan is to do eight inch mains?
Yes, correct.
So, so if we were hook, hooking up White Pond to, to our system, would we be doing that with eight inch mains or 12 inch mains?
No, I like what you're thinking on this, Ken. So this is a potable treated water line. And White's Pond, we cannot, we would actually have to hook up a raw water line. So the, the reason that we alluded to the eight inch sized main is for the fire suppression. That's the minimum size for fire hydrants. But realistically, the raw water line would be a 12 inch water main, but it would actually not be treated. So we would need two lines in this easement.
Okay, that answers my question.
Excellent. Does anybody else have any other questions before we move along with this? All right, so we are voting on the amended motion as previously read. David?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, for approval. Chris?
Yes.
Armand? You are muted. Yes, excellent. And Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you, Justin, for all of your work on all of that. I, I appreciate it.
No worries.
All right, so, continuing on. We have the motion, so the motion here is gonna be a motion to authorize the town administrator to approve the contract with Silk Town Roofing Incorporated for the replacement of the Green Meadow School roof in the amount of $567,389. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Greg, do you want to speak on this?
Yes, so following the town meeting appropriation for the funding scheme to pay for the replacement of the kindergarten pre-K roofs, or wings roof, which was a combined sum of $650,000. We moved forward through our design contractor, which is CBI, to go into the bidding process for that replacement. And the, the winning bid, so to speak, was Silk Town Roofing Incorporated with a bid proposal of $567,389 for both the base bid, which was one side, and then the first ad alternative, which was the other side. Now, we're trying to expedite this process, which is obviously challenging because we're also trying to reopen the schools. So but the original motion that I had presented on Friday, you know, you know, in working with Justine St. John, was to, was to have the board approve it. I was hoping to have the contract, you know, finalized by today to have that completely done, but it's not yet. So there were some supplemental conditions, which our legal counsel wanted to have added. And so it just wasn't ready for final approval. But that being said, I think there is an urgency to have this contract completed so that, that work can, can occur. Now, time is always of the essence for these sort of projects, but particularly with, with the school reopening plan. And we had, we had a meeting this morning with the superintendent's office and Justin DiMarco was on, on as well. Not, not trying to pressure the school department about when their reopening will be, but we wanna make sure that, you know, this work could coincide with that. As, you know, because there is an urgency to get this roof repaired. So that's why I recommend changing the motion, which I discussed with the, Justine St. John, to authorize me to approve it. Now, just for more context, the board does have a policy that the town administrator can approve contracts up to $50,000. So this is obviously well above that. And I know I'm asking for an exception, which I would not do, I do not take lightly. And it is completely up to the board whether to, to, to approve this motion, to authorize me to approve the contract, which I would do only after legal counsel gives approval of, of, of the contract in terms of those contracts. A little more background, Silk Town is trying to expedite this on their end as well. So they were originally, they, they even gave us a certificate of insurance. They wanna move tomorrow. They wanted to be on the roof tomorrow to start, to start doing, you know, basically their assessment of, of what the current conditions are. And they're, you know, so although the conditions were already provided to them through the envelope study that CBI conducted, you know, best practices, they, they, they send out their project manager himself. But we were hesitant to allow for that, even though we have their insurance certificate, because we don't have a contract yet. So we, so, you know, you know, I don't know, we would be having them do something we're not paying for yet. So, so again, I'm, I know I'm asking a lot of the board to, you know, to, to give me this, this, you know, to, to empower me to do this contract on, on your behalf. But that's my recommendation in order, you know, in order to expedite this process.
Okay. Quick question, it, it's kinda related, is, I know that, you know, when we talk about the, the roof and the structure and whatever, the structural analysis, was that done? And are we still waiting for the report on that?
I'm still waiting on the report. So I asked, I think that's a great question. And that was, that was brought up this morning with the superintendent's office. So the school committee had requested that analysis. So the school committee had requested that analysis done in order to better weigh their options. So in regards to the timing of this work to be done. You know, if they're, so just for more background, if, so the pre-K was not occupied over the, over this last academic year because we weren't sure the structural integrity of the roof over the, over those classrooms. So the school committee requested, as we were planning for this roof replacement, to know how soon does the roof need to be replaced? Ideally, we wanted to have it do it when, when this, when the school was unoccupied during the, during the summertime. But when, sorry, close, when we weren't sure when this was going to occur, they asked for the roof assessment to know is the roof, is the roof going to come down on them during the winter time? So I, I don't have the report yet. I just sent another message over to CBI asking for, for the status on that report, so I don't have it at this time. But that being said, it's, it may be redundant at this point, because we, you know, we do want to take advantage of, of the contracting schedule of this contract and the, and the bid, this bid price that was given. Again, this is below the $650,000 mark, which will give us some contingencies, because, you know, as is always the case, whenever you're doing remodeling or replacement, you never, you never entirely know, but that based on their bid price, this is what, this is what they offered. So ideally, we would be moving, you know, if we were to move ahead with this roof replacement, that's done before the winter time anyway. So, so the, the question was the snow load and the, and the weight capacity on the roof, and hopefully we'd be ahead of it.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions for Greg regarding the contract? No? All right. Well, then we will move forward. So we're going to move to authorize the town administrator to approve the contract. And all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris? You're muted again.
Yes. Dog's bark.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you, Greg. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Number 11. Basic financial planning. We've got a few things under this. The first is the CARES Act Funding Certification. And I'm going to move to approve the letter of certification for the request for funding through the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act as provided. Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, Greg?
So, in our application to the state for CARES Act, which is the, it's kind of like the state's translation of the federal stimulus package, it just, this is procedural, honestly. It's, it's, my old bosses, the administration finance, the executive office for administration finance, which is the governor's budget team, they, they, the secretary is requesting that the executive officers of the municipality, in which case for Maynard, it's the Board of Selectmen, give this letter of certification. So, our, so the town's emergency management director, which is Chief Stowers, the fire chief, he is managing the application for the town, working both the school department and the town departments. And so this is, this is kind of like the first step. So we're, he's been in contact with the state and coincidentally, some of my colleagues. And, and this is just a procedural step in that application. You can see, you can see the dollar amount of this initial request, which is the $348,500. But I'm, it's the first of, I don't know how many more, but, but it'll be the first of our applications for that. And then this is also, just as more context, to supplement what we've already applied to FEMA. So, but that FEMA will only reimburse 75%, and our understanding is, and this was verified by Anna, that we can apply for that non-reimbursable amount, that 25% through the state's CARES Act. So again, this is, this is one part of our process for asking for reimbursement. And the majority of this money is unsurprisingly going to the school department. So the, the town department actually had, not, no, you know, like not negotiable amount of costs for reimbursements, but certainly the school department has the bulk of the costs.
I'm sure.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
How closely are they scrutinizing these things, Greg? For example, I see that's on the list, a couple of laptops for the police department. What happens if they say, no, that doesn't fit our qualifications, that's on us, and we've already spent it?
That's a good question. So we didn't, we didn't even put this on the list before we had it vetted. So, so Chief Stowers has been talking with, I actually know the guy who's doing these applications, and he talks to him to make sure that we're not going to be purchasing something or applying for something that's not going to be reimbursed.
Okay, good.
Both the FEMA, so we worked through MIMA, which is the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to, to make sure our application was in accordance with the FEMA regulations. So, but that's a great question. Like, we definitely don't want to move forward and put something on our books that we have to pay for ourselves.
Unversely, is there any chance we're missing an opportunity to fund something that other towns are funding? Do we have eyeballs on that somehow, either by looking sideways or directly with them? Especially as schools start to reopen, there may be specific costs associated.
So it's definitely, that's a great question. So it's definitely on the school side, I would say. Like, the town, again, not, not to say we don't have any, we have minimal costs compared to, to the school side. And, and we already have, like, intermunicipal agreements for our, for our public safety and whatnot, whether it be through NEMLEC and the police, or, or through ambulatory services for the fire start. But it's, but mostly, I think, and this was brought up, I believe, at the tri board meeting, what sort of regional efforts are, are taking place for the school reopenings? So that's a good question. I, and I can't speak with the superintendent's office. Like, I think that they would have to answer for, for what sort of, and I, and I like what you're bringing up, is like, what, what sort of collaboration could we have? How could we kind of have it together? That being said, like, we are also sensitive to what the CARES Act sort of threshold of, so when A and F, you know, took the amount of federal money that they were going to be provided, but then I, I think they cut off Plymouth and Boston for several reasons, but then they kind of divvied up the rest according to municipalities and populations. I think the town of Maynard got like $980,000 or something to that effect. But, which is not, that's not, not insignificant amount of money, and we should be able to cover most of our needs. But if not, I think you're right to pursue regional collaboration to make sure we can, we can all be satisfied. But again, I'd have to double check with the superintendent's office. Again, this is not the, this is not the final application. So I'm sure there'll be more work to go.
I think I've spoken with a few, a few people too in, in this type of field. And to your question, Jeff, the, the one thing is, and it kind of piggybacks on what David was asking, is we really do have to dot our i's and cross our t's with these, because if we do try to stretch it in any way, and the state comes back and decides that wasn't a cost, then, then we do own it. So, so, you know, it's kind of like walking that line of making sure we, we get exactly what we need, but not stretching it too far.
Right. We also don't want the reputation
Right.
of the awarding authorities.
Very true. Anyone else? All right. Well then, all in favor approving this letter? Let's see, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I also approve. Thank you. Next is going to be borrowing authorization. And I move to authorize the advance of funds in lieu of borrowing report for $300,000 to partially cover the replacement of the roof at the Green Meadow School. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Greg?
So I wish I had reordered, I wish this was ordered right after the Green Meadow park. So this is how we're paying for the Green Meadow. So, and all credit goes to Cheryl Kane and Mike Guzzo and the rest of the finance team for putting this scheme together. So they're, they're, this is the most advantageous approach to, to this funding scheme. And it's, when working with bond counsel and our banks, per Cheryl Kane's memo, you should read Cheryl Kane's memo, and she is on the line for any questions. But I recommend this, this motion, you know, per her funding scheme. That way, it's the most expeditious way to sort of match up, like, again, we're trying to get this roof fixed. We had to have the money in place, so this is, this is our approach.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions for either Greg or Cheryl or Mike? No, Armand, okay. All right, vote in favor to authorize. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you very much. Thank you, Cheryl and Mike, for your work on this. We appreciate it. Going through your budget transfers. Item C in this, I'm going to move to approve the budget transfers recommended for FY '20 as presented, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved. Do I have a second? Thank you. All right, Greg?
So this is a annual procedure. I don't know how long the town administrator is doing this, but in the last two years, this is, this is, that I've been in the place, this is what we've done. So at the end of the fiscal year, we're kind of cleaning up the books, so to speak. So amongst the different departments, you may have some departments that, you know, just due to whatever circumstances, have either underspent or overspent according to their, their line items and their budgets. And so, you know, the way, the way the, the budget appropriate is appropriated in Maynard is through functions. So you, within functions and whatnot, you can do budget transfers. And, and so this is what that request is. So it's, it's, it is procedural to a degree, because we do it every year, but the amount of money and where the departments come from, that varies, of course, year to year. So the, the request is pretty straightforward, but if you, if you look at the, the specific requests, it's, it's kind of, it's cleaning up a little bit of business. You know, I'm, I'm referring to the spreadsheet that was provided to the board. So there's expenses to and expenses from. So you can see right off the bat, like, a big bulk of this request is just to clean up how we do our, our gas, and how we pay for our, our gas, and whatnot. So, which is sort of like taking from all the departments, putting in one item, kind of helps this accounting for like how, how much gas we spend overall. But you can kind of go down the list, and I can, I can, or myself or Mike Guzzo can speak to any of these if you have specific questions about these.
Again, to clarify, for those listening in, especially for those who watch this, you know, three weeks from now, and can't look at board docs necessarily, the gas you're referring to is automobile gasoline versus gas for buildings or any other type of gas. It's, it's petroleum gas.
Yeah, fuel, fuel. Yeah, fuel.
Excellent.
Good point.
Does anyone else, does anyone have any questions for Greg or Mike regarding the transfers?
What's the $69,000 health insurance town share line down near the bottom?
$69,000. So that, so we didn't spend that. So so we, so you see it's from the from column? So, so we, we over-budget intentionally our health insurance every week.
That's, that's the answer I was looking for.
Oh. You're welcome.
Jeff, that's only partially true.
I understand.
Because when we budget, we don't know exactly how many people are on. So if we budget say for 502, and you're 502, and we actually end up with 497, it saves us at 20,000 a person. So, you never know. It's a guess, always, you know. It goes up and down, so, you know, we don't know.
And we don't know what the, we don't, we don't know what the
The cost.
Right, that's why it's called budgeting.
That's right.
Right. I mean, four years ago, it was only like 20,000, so.
Right.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, we will move this one forward as well. Motion to approve the budget transfers. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
All right, and I am a yes as well. So, perfect. Thank you, thank you, everybody. So the development of the FY '21 operating in capital budgets. Greg, I'm wondering, given the time of evening, and what we'll have going on, I'm wondering if that's something that we can put on the budget, on the, because we, we did just have the tri board meeting last week.
Yeah.
You know, would that, would that be too detrimental to just push it off to the, actually, for you, it'll, it won't be, because I think you'll be away for that meeting, correct?
I'll be away for the second meeting in August. Is that what you're referring to?
Oh, so you, you won't be away for the first meeting in August?
Yeah, so I'll be here, so the next regular scheduled select meeting is the 4th, August 4th.
Okay, all right.
And then after that is 18th. But, so, so, you, you let me, let me tell you your, your pros and cons. So, yes, you can delay this. Of, of course you can. If you, if you don't, and I'll, and I'll get to what I'm asking in a minute, but actually, I'll tell you now, what I'm looking for is some direction before, similar to some of the other actions in this, in this agenda, is, is like, should I move forward with some articles? You know, we'll draft the articles. It's, it's not so complicated to draft those articles. And, but that's, you know, borrowing authorization for the feasibility study, or not borrowing authorization. You know, maybe we want to go through the general stabilization route, or maybe some sort of hybrid between a one-year capital exclusion and then the rest of the general stabilization. So I know these are big, to your point, Adam, sure, these are big conversations. And, and, but, and it's ongoing conversations, but that's what I'm looking for, is direction when it comes to drafting motions to present to the board for your consideration for the, for the special town meeting. Because according to the timeline we had, we were trying to get all the articles to the board by the 4th, which is the next meeting. Not to say like that's the end, we're not publishing the, we're not publishing the, the warrant the next day, but we, we are trying to, to get those onto your agenda. But I, I'll just, I'll kind of, I'll boil it down to the big, the two big things that I'm looking for from the board is how you want to do the feasibility study, or if you want to do the feasibility study to help, and then how you want to do the fire station. So those, those are the two big items on my, I'm, I'm sure there are other items.
Those are really big.
Those are big questions.
Those are big questions. And so we can start drafting articles, and, and we can, you know, as we will, because I, you know, and then the board can decide either to accept those articles or
Exactly, yeah.
That's true. But how we draft those articles, that's what I'm saying, there, there could be, there are some options.
Right. Well, I think that, you know, that, so, so we've had a couple options for the feasibility study that we've, we've explored. And then the fire station, I think there's only one option, correct?
That's the only one option I've, I've offered, yes.
Right. So, does the rest of the board agree that if you could do the fire station one as the option, that the only option right now that we have?
This is a day exclusion for the public. I'm, I'm, I'm no bones about it. I'm, I recommend.
And it is, yeah. And then the feasibility study, I don't know how the board feels about, you know, there's, there's potentially two different ways you can do that. You can do it with taking money out of general stabilization, or you can also do it by having the, the residents pay a one-year tax, or a one-year
Yeah, it's a capital exclusion. So it's like, it's like a one-year override. So you're, you're artificially increasing your tax base by, but only for one year.
Right. So I don't know if it would be worth it just to honestly prepare at this moment, so we can move on, prepare, be prepared to have both of those scenarios to present, and then we can debate that at the August 4th meeting.
I understand.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And that's, that's fine. That's, that's good direction, because I just, I wanted, if you, if you told me not to do something, that's, that's also a direction. So, yeah. All right. I understand.
Everybody, is everybody in favor of that? I don't, there's no real motion right here, but everybody feel okay with that as presented? And we kind of will, will put this earlier on in the agenda, so, for the August 4th, so we're not quite, you know, at the end.
Do we have a later agenda on the 4th?
Yeah.
Hey, because if it's going to be a late night, that night too, there's no point in delaying it.
Well, I almost, but that's the thing, is I think I will put this earlier on the agenda, so we're fresh. And, and I'll take a look more at what, what we have coming up. And, and we'll see what we can do, because I do think that this is going to take a longer conversation than we're willing to give at 10 of 10. So
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so, move on to the special town meeting, which is item 12, and it is the motion, I'll move to accept draft articles for the special town meeting, October 5th, 2020, as listed, which are the bylaw review committee recommendations. Three. Amend bylaw, chapter 15, section 5, replace with the following, section 5 below. Six, deleting bylaw, chapter 27, alarm systems, and creating new bylaw, chapter 27, alarm video. Seven, amend bylaw, chapter 24, to dog owners' responsibility. Seven, amend bylaw chapter 24 to dog owners responsibility bylaw. And eight, amend bylaw chapter 21 for nuisances. Do I have a second?
Okay. Can you, I'm sorry, can you clarify the numbers that you just read? Because it's not just a.
You know what? I'm reading the draft, but then the file attachment looks different. So.
It up and that, that's what I'm, I cleaned up. So I put it in, I put it in order.
Okey-dokey. Um, all right, I am going to withdraw that motion and make another one. And the motion is to accept and approve and move to the finance committee for review and comments the following articles for the special town meeting, October 5th, 2020. And we are going to amend bylaw chapter 15, section 5, amend bylaw chapter 21, amend bylaw chapter 24, delete bylaw chapter 27 and create new bylaw titled alarm and video, and amend bylaw chapter 34. Now, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. All right. Greg?
So these, these are articles that we did not, that we postponed from the annual town meeting. And then Becky Moska, the admin assistant for the board of selectmen, she reached out to all those committees that, 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 and just wanted to double check, like, do you, do you still want these bylaws or whatever the, whatever the, the motions were going to be? And, and so the bylaw review committee chaired by Bill Coleman, he said, yes, put those, put those articles back for the selectmen to consider. So you've seen these before, so to speak.
Okay. And it does, it does look like there's a couple that were drafts that were never actually approved by us. The amend, well, according to the thing, it says draft article needs VOS approval, amend chapter 15, section 5, and replace with following section 5.
I had understood that you had seen these, but I apologize if I'm mistaken.
No, you know what?
Greg, it's actually the storm water on 34. That's one that is definitely a draft for the first time that the board's seen it.
We did have a, a detailed discussion on it.
Yeah, yeah.
At, at, at one point. And.
Redid this.
And Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the charter basically says that any, any article that is submitted by a multi-member board shall be accepted by the board of selectmen. So the fact that it's been submitted, it, it shall be accepted unless I'm misreading what the charter says.
No, if you're reading it, then I.
I'm not reading the, I'm not reading the charter right now. I'm doing it by memory. And I'm not sure if, because the, because the bylaw committee is not, is not an elected board, I don't know if there's any differentiation. For the planning board, we shall accept any, anything that comes from them. I assume it's the same thing for the, for the bylaw, bylaw committee. But I don't know.
Yeah, I can do a little research. I can, if.
I just don't know if we need to have time debating it. And our time to debate it and prepare it is as we're going, walking up to town meeting, you know, so that if, if we, if we can't change it because they've submitted it, we should just approve it. And if we can change it because they've submitted it, then we should have that discussion. But I don't think we can. I think we shall accept it is the way that the, but it's too late to have that discussion.
Okay. So, does anyone else have any questions or comments about the bylaws as written right now?
I had two. The first is, and I'm, I can't find it. I was looking over the weekend, but what, or am I reading it correctly that somebody's not allowed to operate an electric scooter on a public road?
For the proposed new?
That's probably under nuisances.
Nuisance laws, yeah. Nuisance bylaws.
Let me, let me read just to make sure.
But I believe that was an old one, wasn't it? Is that being amended? Is that what's going on?
Well, what, what we provided should be the updated version.
Yeah. So it's section 11, no person shall operate, and the question is, this, this could very well be a bylaw that we already have. And, but it says, no person shall operate a motorized scooter, motorized skateboard, other similarized motorized vehicle on any public way, sidewalk, playground, or on any property owned by the town of Maynard. Bond vehicles shall be exempt from the provisions of this bylaw unless operating in unsafe manner, and that's vehicles registered with license as motor vehicles, vehicles used by handicapped persons, landscaping equipment, and golf carts at the Maynard Golf Course.
So if you want, I can go back to the bylaw review committee and have them clarify. I get that, I don't. That's fine.
I mean, I see them in town. I, I don't know if, you know, there's a difference. I just want to make sure explicitly we know what, what the bylaw states in regards to electric scooters, because they're becoming more popular, they're a mode of transportation. I, I kind of view them almost, yeah, and there's certain safety considerations. If we want to have them, if we don't want to have them, there's implications there too. I just want to know what the, what the rule is.
Yeah, I saw an electric skateboard on the rail trail the other day. Like that, yeah.
Is that considered a public way? I don't know.
It's owned by the town.
So it's a public way?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen them on the, I've seen them on the.
I've seen them on the streets too.
Well, I've seen them on the streets too, would be.
I'll, I'll get clarity from, uh, from Bill Coleman.
Perfect.
The second question I had was with the alarm systems in regards to section six, any business who employs a video security system shall register it with the administrator. So what happens if a business wants to have a video security system set up and they don't want to register it with the police? I can see why we wouldn't want that to be, but what's the, what's, what's?
implication?
Yeah, if it, I'm, I'm assuming if the alarm connects to the police, then obviously we need that registered and want to know about it. But if you want to have a closed circuit security system for your business, why is that not allowed?
I think the police want to know where they are for their own investigation issues. So they can, that's part of it anyway. So they, if there's a crime that's committed outside that building, they know where to go to get video recordings that might be applicable. That may be a part of it. I don't know if that's specifically why they put it in here, but that's, I think the town, the police certainly have an, an interest in knowing where those are. But do you have the right to have a private, you know, a, an alarm, a, a video system that you don't want anybody to know you have? You probably do.
That's what I was wondering. And, yeah.
What section, Jeff, I'm sorry for, could you?
It's the alarm system, the chapter 27, and then section six.
Section six.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just taking notes because I'll, I'll go back and make sure.
Yeah, I just don't feel we can compel a business to divulge that if they don't want to.
If there's any question with the like, the legal, legal legality of it.
Yeah.
That costs.
Town council and/or the attorney general will tell us before we are allowed to put it in.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the rules are either, but I know that if, you know, if it's a violation of any type of state law or regulation, the attorney general and or town council will tell us before, before it goes into our bylaws.
Also, I, I realize that many eyes will look at this before, you know, it goes to print. But for that article, chapter 27, deleting is spelled wrong.
Where at the top?
At the top. D E L.
Oh, deleting. Yeah.
Like I said, I know it, it would have gotten hot, but.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, to, to Jeff's question, the one, the, under the sponsor comments, they addressed the issue that Jeff had as to why that would be necessary. And it is consistent with what I figured. But it says, the committee has worked with the chief of police and at his request included a section on video security systems on commercial property, so the police department can be aware of the location of those systems. So it's a public safety issue relative probably so that they, they can investigate crime.
I understand why we want, I just figure if I own a private business and I, I don't want.
It's a good point. Yeah.
Looking my nose in that, that, that there would be an objection there. So.
I can have the bylaw review committee and, and/or the chief sort of give further justification.
Perfect. So, do you want us to then still move to move everything forward, but we obviously, you know, we'll get our questions answered before the printing of the warrant anyways?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions regarding the warrant articles as written? All right. Then the motion to accept and approve. David?
Yes.
Chris? Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
All right, and I am a yes. Thank you. Next, we're going to do collective bargaining agreements. Agreement. And this is going to be motion to approve the Launa Professionals Collective Bargaining Agreement effective July 1, 2019, and remain in full force and effect until June 30th, 2022. Authorize to use digital signature if it is approved. Do I have a second?
Certainly.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Greg?
So just as a little background, I know those dates look like we're way behind on an April, but we, we, we started negotiating a while ago, just for, for everyone to know. And it's no one's fault in particular. It's, it's, sometimes negotiations take a while, but it also doesn't help when COVID happens. So the board had approved the MOA, which is the memorandum agreement, which highlights the differences between CD, you know, one agreement and the next agreement. And the board already approved those MOA. So this is the, this is the step in the process where you're just incorporating that into the, into the full contract. So there's no changes in the, in the terms of the agreement that was, that's already been approved. This is just saying, this is it. This is the new, this will be the new agreement for the next, well, two years.
Okay.
And this is for Launa Professionals. So again, for the public, if you're not familiar, so the town has a number of unions. One of those unions is the Professionals Union, which is, is the department heads. So if you have many, not all, but many of the town staff that have managerial positions fall under this, if they're not in another union agreement or, or have a separate individual employment agreement.
Perfect. Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
Just a comment, since I wasn't here when the MOA was approved, if Greg, next time something comes up like this, could you send the MOA that the previous board attached to, so I can understand what I'm approving?
Not a problem. So we only have the one other that, that'll be the case. And that's, we'll, we'll send that to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right. Motion to approve. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
The, Armand?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And I approve as well. So thank you. We have gotten to the town administrator report.
Congratulations. We, we're almost done, guys. So, again, I very much, I very much encourage the public, and especially the board, to look at the town administrative report. I, my, the departments put a lot of time and effort into their reports that they submit to me, and then, and then I, I relate to the, to the selectmen and to the public at large. It's on the website. Please go look at it. And I don't want to take up a lot of time. So the only thing I'll highlight is selfish, is that I do hope to take some personal time off for the week of August 27th through the 21st. I'm going to the Cape, I'm not going, not going far. So I'm abiding by all the, so, and we're getting a house, it's mine. We'll be on our own, be the house.
And you're so excited about it. You mentioned it twice.
I am very excited about it. But it's the, it's the vacation I take every, you know, the last two years. It's the one vacation I take. Anyway, so if, so, but I, per the town charter, I am required to get approval from the board to be excused from selecting meetings. So if you allow me, I'll be excused from a select meeting. And Megan Sumuro, it will be present.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Do we need to take an official vote, or we just kind of say yay?
No, as long as you don't object from it.
We don't.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all I have, Adam.
Chris objects. No, I'm kidding. All right. So we need to finish up a little bit of business from the last meeting. And the first order of business is to elect a clerk. And basically, my understanding of the clerk is, is, you know, the clerk shall sign, part of it's written here, is that shall sign all the official documents requiring the signature of a clerk with the authorization of the board and shall be responsible for recording minutes of any portion of meetings held in executive session for which the town administrator is not present. The other part that I have kind of seen play out is that the clerk also unofficially takes the role of almost an acting chair when the chair isn't there. So I kind of view this as, as kind of that, I know we talked a little bit about there could be an acting chair, an assistant chair or whatever. I personally kind of view this position as that. So I'm wondering if anybody wants to nominate anyone to be where, for the board of, of the board for the term of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 21.
I will say this, that traditionally going back, that the newest member of the board, because of the fact that it was not a pleasant experience to keep minutes, was traditionally elected as the clerk. So having said that, with our tradition, I would nominate Jeff Swanberg as the clerk.
Knew I should have nominated somebody first.
Well, do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff, I, I mean, I, I'm going to ask, are you okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay. That is, that is wonderful. So then all in favor? David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am in favor as well. So thank you very much. I, I appreciate you being voluntold.
Yes.
I look forward to working with you. All right. So the next is we're going to review the list of the liaisons. I haven't had a chance to check one thing, and I believe it's the, oh, it was changed. Does anybody have any questions about the liaisons?
Right. We just, I just wanted to double check that, what we recorded from the last meeting, that it, we got it right. That's why I wanted to double check. We got it right.
Yep, yep. No, I understand.
Okay.
Everyone good? All right. And then the third subject is to consider our goal-setting session. My personal opinion, and I am willing to hear all, obviously, everything. My personal opinion is that the goal-setting meeting works really well as, almost like an offsite. It is definitely a public meeting, but I think that having a change of, of venue really does kind of open up to different conversation that happens. I do realize that we're in, we're, we're still in the midst of COVID. So I was wondering if people would be amenable to having something even on a Saturday outdoors with a rain date, or it's something to that effect. We could do it, you know, behind, you know, I kind of, we were going back and forth. I was asking Greg a couple of questions and, you know, we could do it behind town hall. We could do it, you know, at seven o'clock, but then you've got the mosquitoes and whatnot. So I was wondering if, you know, a weekend day would work. I, I'm pretty much open to what anyone has to say at this point.
I, I, I don't have a problem with any day of the week, but I do think that if, given that there's only seven of us, the five of us and Greg and Megan, that we could get, you know, you could get Justin to set up the room that we've been using for the past few years. You know, appropriate social distancing.
Just though that we, it does have to be a public meeting, so therefore there has to be availability of enough seats. I mean, we haven't had many people in the past. So we probably even in that room could fit it in with that, with that scenario.
Yeah, I think there's, I mean, I think there's adequate space in it, a public, public, you know, safely distance ourselves from one another, anyone else. But, but that's, you know, just for lack of another space, but I'm okay anywhere.
I like the outdoor idea myself of the one that's presented for, especially for the reason David said, if, you know, if somebody else, one or two people want to watch, if there's outdoor space, more room to set up extra areas.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem with a Saturday? Like, I'm thinking like mid-morning, like 10-ish, like maybe 10 to 12? Something like that? Okay. Um, Greg, do you want to choose a date? And I, does anybody want to look at their dates? Because I, I guess vacations do happen.
I can send out like a doodle pole, you know, you know, you know, I've had those recently. And then, and I'll just throw out a couple of Saturdays. And then, and, and, and Justin, you and I can, can still go back and forth about a possible venue. So inside or outside, like we can, we can just see what's available.
Saturdays in August may be tough for me, because I got vacation, and then I've got to bring my daughter back to school. I just don't know what date that is yet, but they are going back. So I just don't have that yet, and I think those are all, the 15th, the 22nd, and I think the 29th are all, is all probably booked with my other potential plans, but.
Okay. Well, I think we have also gone into September.
September, yeah, I was going to say, there's no reason, yeah.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah.
Less mosquitoes, too.
The, Brendan, the Master Planning Committee, and I haven't heard back from him, just about, you're active or not, so that's just, might be another reason to lay a little bit to see if we can, you know, get them to see if they're going to be able to have a meeting between now and then to help.
Are there any issues with public meetings, other than town meeting, of course, being held on a weekend?
No.
No, okay.
You have a, as long as it's posted ahead of time and it's accessible. But Jeff, what were you, what were you saying, that you wanted another meeting of the master plan? I'm sorry.
I figured it, to get some
Waiting.
Committee on, on, not only, we have the master plan, right, and all the different goals and objectives, which I think is a natural source for our goals and objectives, and you were to meet between now and our meeting, not knowing, here's all the objectives, but here's the priority list, here's the, you know, the ones that make the most sense to tackle right off the bat for us to work. So I thought it would be helpful, the Master Planning Committee, or whatever the follow-up successor committee to that is, met before we.
Oh, okay.
They, they haven't met yet, but to Jeff's point, they haven't met yet.
I don't think they, they probably weren't going to meet, because they were, their work was done. I mean, like, they, they did the master plan, and they were just.
No, but there's a, there's a committee, the, what are you called, the in?
So that's, okay, so that's the, so Adam Kahn had coined the term What's Next Committee, and then you know, a lot of towns are just called the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but Adam Kahn, just the other circumstances, he's not able to stay on for that subsequent committee. That's fine. So I've reached out to Jason Creel, who's you're familiar with, and he was on the Master Plan Committee, and we're also kind of putting feelers out there for other members that might join this What's Next Committee, or Master Plan Implementation, whatever the case. But I'm, you know, it's scheduling, trying to meet with Jason, trying to get his input, see if, see if he's able to take that on, and that, not to put any undue pressure on him, but I am trying to look for a leader, if it's not Adam Kahn, a new leader for this implementation committee. But that being said, so I don't know if they're going to be able to meet between now and then, or, or if they would be able to determine. I think it's a good idea, is like, ask for their advice to the board of selectmen, like, what would, how would you, they prioritize? But absent of that, I mean, the board, I'm sure the board, you probably have your own sort of like agendas and what you were trying to put together, so.
I, to speak with, to that, what I, my idea for the, for the goal-setting meeting this, this year is going to be, I kind of ran it by Greg earlier today, or yesterday, whatever, that basically, I think that, you know, we can go through the goals that we had for last, last year, look to see what we thought was accomplished, what, what worked well, what might not have worked. Jeff, I know you weren't part of making those goals, but as someone who's coming in from the outside, maybe you can take a look at them and see where you think it was communicated that we accomplished them, or we didn't accomplish them, and where we can improve with that. And then if everyone can come with, I know I'm giving homework, but if everyone can come with one or two ideas of where, you know, anything that they want to focus on, that way it will give us a jumping off point for the goal-setting, and then we can just go from there.
But I just think to Jeff's point, it's important that we do use the master plan as a blueprint to a degree, and we should start looking at the ones that we feel should be prioritized from our standpoint, and I, and I think that's, to us, it's, it's a good roadmap, you know, so we need to kind of look at that and add everything else that. And looking at the last years, by the way, of goals and stuff, looks like we implemented two or three, and we're in the process of doing other ones, so that's kind of nice to see that, you know, we're doing either by osmosis or by plan, I don't know, but it's going on.
You write a plan, it will, it'll, it'll.
Exactly, yeah.
No, it directs my, like, day-to-day, like, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, and I think that that's, you know, Armand, to your point, I think that, I mean, it works if you want to go through part of the master plan, or if we all take something from the master plan, is that something that we think is important, and we can bring it forward. I think that's, that's.
And, and I think that was the concern, that, like with any plan, it doesn't fall apart. So to a degree, we own it. So, you know, even though there is going to be a What's Next Committee, Implementation Committee, we should be in charge of implementing a lot of, a lot of that, you know, plan, so we, I need to, to Jeff's point, that should be something that we definitely should be looking at, you know, seriously, and starting to implement a lot of those pieces in there.
Excellent, okay. So Greg, you'll send out a doodle, and we'll go from there, as far as, we'll, we'll talk offline, figuring out what this is all going to look like. We'll report back. Excellent. And moving on to the chairman's report. Chris will be shocked to know I don't have anything.
Lord.
But I will say, I will say, Maynard High School is graduating again this Friday night. Their seniors are being honored with the in-person ceremony at Alumni Field. It is very strict social distancing, you know, families are allowed to people, no exceptions. You know, they are, they are working really hard to make sure that, that everything is done the way, the way that is manageable for them, so. But I appreciate the fact that they have put this together, and I look forward to celebrating the class of 2020 again. And that's all I have. So Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah, the Man and Human Relations Committee. We have, there's a, there's an issue that was, has been going on at Railroad Street with a landlord and some tenants and all sorts of claims being made back and forth both ways, and apparently, the, you know, the Board of Health did some inspections, but Megan and Greg, you guys saw that letter today, that came out later in the day, and seems as though the landlord kind of addressed a lot of that.
Well, yeah.
To address it.
Yep, our health agent has done initial inspections for the majority of the units. And there are a few that we weren't able to get into, so those inspections will be done this Friday. We've been in touch with the landlord, we submitted an order letter for each property that we inspected with a list of items that need to be fixed right away, and we will work to follow up, to make sure those are fixed. We've also been in touch with our regional housing partners, both Acton Housing Authority, which oversees some of the voucher programs from the state, and SMOC, which I forget what it stands for, but is our other regional partner. And they, to make sure that they're aware of the inspections that we're doing, so that when they go back to do their biannual inspections that they have, you know, our most up-to-date information. So we've been working with kind of a mini task force. Honestly, there have been some complaints that have risen to Senator Eldridge and Representative Hogan. So they, they wanted to meet with town staff, so myself and Kelly and Greg, and our state legislators have been talking about an approach, and we've been giving them weekly updates about the progress we've been making in inspections.
Right, so, but this afternoon, the landlord sent out a letter saying he had hired a property management company, and was addressing these things. The, the Human Rights Committee wanted me to come to this board with a letter that they had written, but the letter's not complete yet, that I know, correct, Mike? Chief?
Yeah, that's correct. I had some issues that I talked with one of the members about that, you know, you know, legalities and things like that, probably shouldn't put in it.
Right, so, so that letter's not complete, because the plan that we discussed at our last meeting, which was this past Monday, was that I would bring the letter to this board and suggest that we, you know, pen a similar letter, but in my opinion, you know, number one, that letter's not complete, but number two, if the landlord has hired a property management company that's, you know, reputable group, and they're going to come in, and he's going to pay them to do what he hasn't done, I, I hope it resolves the problem without us having to write a letter, because you know, it, most of it will probably be resolved before they even get the letter from the Human Rights Committee, if, if they're working at the pace that the letter claims. So that's just floating out there, and I know that, I know that some of you guys, as members of the board, have seen it on Facebook, and I know that Elliot, Elliot and some of his, you know, some of his close associates have kind of been sharing that information around town, and that's, that's where it's at. You know, we were going to suggest through the letter that they wrote, that we write one, but that letter's not complete, and it seems as though there's been some, you know, some activity, and I guess between now and the next time I find out if, you know, when, when I see the final version of the letter, I'll ask the question before I bring it to this board to write a letter. Is, is this property management company actually started to work and progressing, because it's, you know?
Yeah, I'm happy, Chris, to come to the next meeting to get, to give updates to the Human Relations Committee.
I mean, I, I appreciate that too, but I think they've been going directly to Kelly for information.
Okay, that's great, too.
One of them, one of the, one of the women on the committee has kind of been going directly to Kelly, I think.
Oh, yes, one is.
Caroline Mahidi.
What's that?
Caroline Mahidi is the.
I haven't spoken, I haven't spoken with her myself.
She's been going directly to Kelly for information, so.
We have been providing, you know, you know, some folks have asked for our public records, which we're happy to, you know, work to compile and share, to make sure everyone has, you know, whatever we have for full transparency. But yeah, myself or Kelly, you know, we're always happy to give updates on some of the progress we're making, but I, I was encouraged by that letter today, so I'm hoping we can get.
Yeah, that was the first movement in a positive direction in a little while.
I agree.
Lot, a lot of finger pointing. But that's all for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Armand, do you have anything tonight?
So those of you that are not aware, which by the way was mentioned in Greg's report, in regards to the 115 Main Street project, the planning board denied the applicants the special permit due to the fact that I guess a lot of the requests that were made were not in met. It is, it's a shame that they weren't able to reach a compromise to get this project moving forward. It's very disappointing, but at the same time, behind the scenes, we are hopeful to work on some kind of a plan to resurrect this project and get it going again. So we're hoping that we could do some, some magic and get this thing back on, on track again. So just wanted to let you know on that.
Excellent. Thank you for your work on that, Armand. I know that you've been working really hard with it.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome. That's all I got.
All right, David?
Thank you. I actually had a document that I was going to read into the record, but it's way too late to do that, relative to the whole issue that we discussed at our last meeting, relative to the Water Commissioner position that's been recommended. What I'd like to do is to make it a part of this record by submitting it as a document to be put into the minutes for, or as part of the the package for our next meeting. I think every member of the board should have an opportunity to see what my thoughts were. I was asked about what I wanted to discuss, and really what it does to summarize that. And again, I don't want to get into the whole, I can show you, it's, it's two pages long, and it has some detail in it as to what I'd like to have discussed. So I'd like to submit that, so that the board can review it and just set it as a, as a document out to the board, or as added to the minutes for this meeting, or to, as part of the record for the next meeting, whichever is preferred, but. So I'll send that out again with a request that it be added to the, to the record, as is typically what happens when a member of the board asks for a document to be added to the record. But anyway, the second thing that I wanted to talk about is, I think we've probably all heard about that sign that is up in town that has some vulgarity on it. It's very disappointing that, that the resident has chosen to put a sign, and I, I don't think it's anything to do, it's, even if it was a different politician that was mentioned on the sign, I, I would feel the same way. So I've been thinking about ways that we can address it, because with free speech and everything else, there's no, there's really no way, and I think, I think everybody got the document from Town Council today that summarized her opinion on that issue. You know, my feeling is if somebody wants to put some sign up on their house that nobody else can see, so be it, but when it's visible, especially to visitors from town walking along the rail trail, it's concerning, and I'm also concerned about what the next level of somebody wanting to put up, I was talking to Greg today, I mean, you know, somebody could put up a pornographic image, and if they're allowed to do it because it's on private property, that to me is, is kind of ridiculous, but you know, this is what we're being told. So my suggestion to Greg and his, the thought that I had was perhaps similar, Chris talked about a letter that maybe we were, if you remember back, maybe a year and a half ago, there was an issue during one of the election campaigns where somebody yelled out an anti-Semitic slur at one of the candidates, and so I'm wondering if we could sign a, or have a letter penned by our our, our PR group that outlines the fact that the board is kind of disappointed with this situation, that we don't condemn, we condemn it, and, and ask that our residents, you know, sort of comply to public, to some, like, some level of decency when it comes to letters, to, to signs. You know, even as, as council suggested, if they were to put the beginning of the word with an F, with a, with an asterisk, where people know what they're saying, that's a little bit different than having the word spelled out. And again, I'm concerned about the future and what somebody can do, because the bylaws allow for it, and, you know, free speech, I guess, allows for it. But I think the community, I've heard from a number of people who have walked along the rail trail with children and otherwise, and people driving along 117 who look in and say, hey, you know, what the heck's going on with that? So I don't know what the board's thoughts are on possibly sending out a condemning letter, or having something drafted to see if the board wants to support it, just so we can send the message that we, we see it and we don't like it, but really, there's nothing we can do about it based on council's thoughts and opinions, but. So I'd like to at least throw that out there as an option. And then lastly, we talked earlier about the, the fact that it sounds like the roof project is going to be, what, 60 or 90 to $60,000 less than what we thought. I hope that when we, when we look at where the, the balance of that money goes, and we can put it back into a capital line item, so that we can not just throw it away on another truck or another car or whatever, and use it for a capital line item as for, as part of the free cash allocations. That's where we were putting it at the beginning of of it anyway. Just my thought, something for the board to consider. But relative to the letter, Greg, I'll, I'll see what your thoughts are and see what the rest of the board thinks, but I, I do think that we owe it to the public to make, make it known that we care about that issue, and that we don't we don't, we don't like it, at least that's my opinion, and that we appreciate people having a little bit more civility relative to the language that they're using on public signs that are, that are visible to the public.
Thank you. A couple things. So first, to your point, David, about the, if there's money left over, I was actually hoping, but I don't know how it works, that it would go back to the taxpayers, and the debt exclusion wouldn't be as high, but, but I'm not sure.
That would be, that would be better, but, but because we already voted the debt exclusion, we can't really do that. The debt exclusion is already put onto the tax bill.
But you won't.
So, but I would agree with, I would agree with that option if that, if that were an option.
Right, I think.
The taxpayer.
I think you only, I think you only pay for what you spend, though. So like, you know, I think it was with the, with the school, they didn't, they didn't borrow up to, you know, they said they could have borrowed up to X, but when they were building the school, but because they didn't need X, they didn't borrow to X.
But the, the debt exclusion that we voted on was for a number specific, which has, would be added onto the tax bill as a number specific, unless there's a way to twist it so that we can make it a lesser number specific, but town meeting voted on a number specific that is basically already tied to our tax bill. That's, but I would prefer that option if, if it were available, but I just don't think it is.
Okay.
Well, Dave, David?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll work on it. We'll see what we can do. There are, there are some ways that we could possibly do it, but I'm not going to go into it.
Yeah, if it can be done, I would prefer that, and lower the, lower the tax burden for that one particular.
We'll, we'll give you the options, and then the board can look at it, and you decide what you want to do. How's that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Can I say at this time, that you're not going to like this, but I would recommend that you, that you stick to what was appropriated by town meeting, which was the $300,000, because as, and then, but to your point, David, whatever we don't spend of, of that $300,000. Because as, um, and then, but to your point, David, whatever we don't spend of, of that three hundred fifty thousand dollars, is it gonna come out of another fund?
Free cash.
Yeah, and so, so retain that, because, um, or either don't spend that, because again, that just means you're not collecting as much taxes. Or you devote to some other capital need, or, or deposit it, so to speak, into civilization accounts.
Yeah, but the fact that you borrow, you, there's debt, you can't put it back to free cash, that's why we'll work something out. That'll give you options to do.
Mike, I think you're missing, I think you're missing Greg's point.
Well, if you don't use all the debt, you can't use that ninety thousand, you're, you're stuck with it, you can't put it back anywhere. Because you borrowed it, even if you only, in other words, if you have three hundred and you only use two hundred, that's all that's gonna go in the tax. That, that taxpayers will pay, that extra hundred thousand, you're stuck, it stays on the books because of how we borrowed it. It's, it's, it's on the books as debt, but there is a way to do exactly what you're saying. In a different way, in other words, once you. Follow what I'm saying, those, if you take the three hundred.
Why don't, why don't you and, and Greg have this conversation offline?
We'll do it, I'll talk to him Thursday.
Thank you, okay, um, the other thing, actually, I happened to notice regarding that sign, um. Is, and I'm not sure, Chief, if you had heard anything yet, um, that that was actually vandalized. There's white spray paint going.
The new one was, the new one was?
Yes.
First one was too, I had not known that.
Vandalized overnight, la- over last night.
Was it last night? I saw it about six o'clock this morning.
Yeah.
Where do you see the third sign? You know, you, you start to escalate, who knows where it's going, right? Not, I don't have any insight to it, but I, I don't even want to think what the next sign's gonna say.
Chief, do you have any comment on it at all? And I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I, 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 I knew what Town Council was gonna say, that, you know, political speech is protected speech, so it's very, you know, difficult. And you can have, uh, talks with the people, I don't like, you know, the language being used in it, but a- as to Chris's point. When somebody doesn't like it and they take it. That brings it up to this level, and then they come back and put the language in, it brings it up to this level, and this. I wish you could just go back to like, okay, everybody, let everybody have their own. Rights in the sense that if the first one wasn't taken in the first place, I don't think we would have got to this point, so.
I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, no, I, that's, that's, that's it, you know, we, you can agree to disagree without having to, you know. Take somebody else's property and then you don't have to be in a vulgar thing, I don't want my kids walking by and seeing that either.
And that's, yeah, I'm not sure, uh, David, as far as how to craft the wording without escalating it further. But I'm happy to, to try to, to do something to, you know, just to express maybe how the Board of Selectmen feel. We, what we, what we look for in a, in a, a community, I, I don't know, something.
That's why, that's why, uh, Greg had suggested that we, uh, ask Gilfoyle to do a little, uh, magic with it. To see what he comes up with and see if the board can agree to it. And if we don't agree to it, we don't agree to it, I, uh, but I certainly want the residents to know that I care. And that I don't, uh, I don't appreciate what was, what was written, and I, again, I don't care which candidate. Or which party or which, uh, whatever it is, uh, the use of that language in a public view. Is just totally inappropriate, we don't need it in town.
I'll, I'll, I'll state that part of the reason you use that language is to provoke a response, and so by writing that letter, we are dignifying it in some way with the response. Not that I'm saying I'm in favor or not of, of that letter, I just want to make sure that that, that argument is there too, um, that. That's tied to what Justin mentioned about escalation, what she.
Which is what council has recommended, that we kind of stay away from that, I think council said that, but it's up to us, I mean, to David's point, it's. It's something that would, um, would be a good message, but you gotta be careful how you craft that message and how you relay that message. Because.
Would we feel the same way, if, would we feel the same way if it was racial language?
I mean, anyway, I mean, I'm just.
Would we say, would we say not to address it because it's, it would escalate?
Well, I mean, I, I think.
No, but, you know, what, what we did, we addressed it when it was another topic, but we're not here, what's the, uh, you know, a different board. But what's the difference?
The difference is that it's a different topic.
You're upping the emotional stakes, I think, if you go there.
Yeah.
So I, I, I see your point, but you're, you're, you're on a, you're on a, that's a, a further escalation, at some point, you're right, we have to respond, but. I'm just, I'm, I'm not saying we're at that point or not right now, I'm just saying maybe not.
And, and again, I'm not saying David's wrong, by the way, don't take me the wrong way, David.
No, I understand that, I, I know nobody, I know nobody here. Condones it.
Of course.
I know that.
Yeah.
It, it's just. I think there's an obligation to, to say the town doesn't condone it.
Uh, Jeff, do you have anything for your comments, sir?
Yes, so Jerry Beck is, uh, uh, writing an application to the NEA grant, the Art Town Grant. You may remember we put in for this two years ago, when I was on the cultural council and Jerry Beck wasn't even at Art Space yet. This time Art Space will be the partner instead of the revolving museum, but they're looking to partner with us as the town of Maynard in a similar fashion to what we did two years ago. There will be some changes to the proposal, I'm hoping to have, uh, him come in at our next meeting, so. If he can get an item on there to, to pitch what he's planning, I don't know the entirety of it yet, but, um, uh, the, the format will look largely the same. There, there shouldn't be any monetary requests from us, but there may be some sort of in-kind donation or, or, um, you know, DPW. Or, or police staff for some portion of the project. So what, what the end result he'll be looking for at the next meeting is, is a, a letter, uh, our endorsement of the project.
Excellent, anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
All right. Uh, I think that is it, right, are we done?
No, we're just beginning.
All right, I'm going to, uh, move to adjourn. Meeting is, uh, August fourth, and I heard a second from who?
Chris.
Chris, thank you. All right, everybody in favor? Yes, hello, good night.
Good evening.
Have a great night.
Good night, thank you.